Welcome everyone to the zoning board meeting of Asbury Park. Today is Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Chris, would you please call us to order?
The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary as well. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question and comment sections. When the public question or comment session is open, you must raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button on a computer or dialing *9 on a telephone. When it is your turn to speak, your name or the last four digits of your phone number will be called. Your microphone will then be unmuted and will make an announcement that this has occurred. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. If you will have a background noise at any time during the meeting, please mute yourself. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times as some attendees are attending by telephone only. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via Asbury Park TV, AP TV. Thank you. Arena, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chris. I will now talk to Christopher Avelloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman.
Yeah.
Christopher Gonzalez. I know he's here.
Yes, he is.
Okay, we're going to mark him as present. Thank you. Joe Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Catherine Minervini.
Here.
And Bonnie Natch is absent. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so we have two applications tonight. Hopefully we'll get to the second one. The first application.
Oh, the minutes.
Oh, yes. First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd, 2020.
I'll second.
Great. I have a motion by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Daniel Harris. I believe everyone is eligible. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved.
All right. Thank you, Arena. So as I was stating before, we have two applications tonight. The first will be 13, 704 Fourth Avenue, Ocean View Development, and Mr. Santori.
If I may, review the submissions for notice with the notices and so on. We have jurisdiction to proceed. I also want to make an announcement to the board that I know Mr. Santori. He and I both unfortunately are in the firework business aside from being an attorney. We do not have a business relationship. While we never had a business relationship, there's no conflict. I know him the same way I know Andy Karas or any of the other attorneys that appear before us. But I did want to put that on the record, so in case anyone ever questions it, I've made the disclosure.
Thank you, Jack.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna echo that Mr. Serpico is 100% correct. Our families have known each other for generations and, you know, we have no business relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. All right, please proceed with your application.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Once again, August Santori Jr. on behalf of the applicant, 13 Grand Point Way, doing businesses, Ocean View Developments. We have several professionals this evening for testimony purposes. We have the engineering office. Mr. Well, Matthew Wilder was the engineer on the project and we have the owner of the thing, Frank Morgan, who's going to be present tonight to go through and walk us through the application, a little bit about the site conditions. From there, we also have Daniel Contador as architect. And then lastly, we have Mr. Brian Leff as the planner for this particular application, which would go through and address hopefully a lot of the comments. There's a lot to cover this evening, so I just want to kind of jump right in. And if we can get the engineer, our engineers sworn in, that would be fantastic.
Perhaps, Mr. Santori, you can give us a little, just a brief summary of the property first before you go jump into the engineer and what's being done and proposed?
Absolutely, I can do that. Um, we're looking at, first of all, we're in an RT zone, which is a two to four family home. It's 704 Fourth Avenue. There's existing structure on there that's extremely close to the, if you're facing the property, the right sideline of the property, which is only probably about 18 inches, I would say, dwelling to dwelling. So it's very, very close, the two dwellings. The proposed structure that we're seeking to put on it respects the side yard requirements in a manner which is going to promote safety for this particular dwelling as well as obviously some aesthetic bearing between the two properties as far as the proposed.
If I understand correctly, you want to demolish the current site?
That is correct. We're going to be demolishing the existing site. The structure is older and obviously it's not in a very safe condition, which we can talk about that relative to the architect who has had a chance to inspect the property and he can testify to those particular elements and items. But as to the structure itself, the core, two core components really that we're dealing with from the use perspective, first one being the 17.4 units per acre as it relates to density, but then as it's contrasted with 2,500 square foot per unit requirement, which we have, obviously they're not reconcilable in the ordinance. I guess it was a rounding issue, but they obviously don't interrelate. So that being said, while we conform in one aspect as to that element with the 2,500 per square foot with three acres with a 7,500 square foot lot, we don't comply as it pertains to the 17.4 requirement. So we're seeking a variant of that particular issue. The FAR one, I think, is very important to address. The FAR variance that we're seeking is strictly really related to the basement. And the basement just being at the seven foot level. So if the basement were at, let's say, 611 and a half, there is no FAR requirement. If it's at seven feet, then you have an FAR issue in your ordinance. So as it pertains to the true living spaces, first and second floor living spaces, we have no FAR issue. The idea and the reasoning behind the request is relative to making sure there's adequate clearance for mechanicals and proper clearance, you know, for those items as you, as you get into the basement. It's not for a living space. It's generally for storage and mechanicals. So that's really kind of an outline of the D variance component that we're dealing with.
The current site, is it vacant, Mr. Santori?
The site is vacant. Yes, house is boarded up as it's currently speaks. It's been vacant for a period of time and, you know, it's it's obviously in ripe for redevelopment.
And Mr. Hannah has owned this property for a period of time now or did he just purchase it?
He purchased the property last year. And at the time of the purchase, we've obviously been going through a period of time dealing with the development and components and preparation for it. And then we started making some initial submissions back at the beginning part of this year. But obviously with COVID-19, that threw a lot of things into the, you know, wrenches into the works. And obviously we've been, we're here now to make this application to seek the relief to be able to construct the dwelling that we're seeking.
So if I understand, you said the current site is not safe? That it really requires it to be demolished and it cannot be used?
Yes, I mean, and look, that's not really my purpose to testify, but that's my understanding from, you know, and Mr. Contador can address that during his testimony in certain.
Okay.
I've never been in the structure myself personally, but I did ask those questions and that's what they've related to me.
Okay, then we can ask the engineer. All right, please proceed.
Yep. So if we could start out getting our engineer sworn in, please. He's showing up under Matthew Wilder, but it's obviously not Matthew Wilder.
Sir, please, he's muted. I can't hear what he's saying.
You got to unmute. I think he's seeking some help. Hold on. There we go.
There we go. Okay, and I'm sorry, sir, can you just state your name and I'll change your name that's appearing on the screen?
Sure. It's Frank. Last name is S as in Sam, A as in Adam, D as in David, E G H I. It's Frank Saveghi, Morgan Engineering.
S A V E G H I, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Saveghi, please raise your right hand. You solemn swear the testimony in this matter, about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thank you. As your witness, Mr. Santori.
If we could hear his credentials first, Mr. Santori?
I'm going to get him qualified first, yes. Mr. Saveghi, can you please walk us through your CV and your history of experience relative to engineering, your current licensing status?
I'm a professional engineer and certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been a professional engineer in New Jersey since 1988. I have provided testimony before various and represented many boards in New Jersey on the planning board level as well as zoning board level.
Okay, and your license is currently in good standing?
Yes.
And you are.
Thank you, Mr. Saveghi. We accept your credentials.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Saveghi, can you please take us through the existing conditions at 704 Fourth Avenue, please?
You covered some of the information that I was going to provide. The tax map designation for the property is Lot 5 within Block 2805 in the City of Asbury Park. The existing property is a perfect rectangle. It's a 50, 50 foot wide by 150 foot deep property. Within the immediate vicinity of the property along Fourth Avenue, you have residential development on the, as you go east in the block and as you go west, obviously except for the intersection with Main Street, it's all pretty much residential. As, as Mr. Santori indicated, the application before you this evening is to demolish. The proposal is to demolish the existing onsite improvements and structure and construct a new three-unit townhouse residential building with the associated parking, landscaping and lighting. As you can see from the site plan, the proposal is to build a building, the proposed building, as you're standing on on the street on Fourth Avenue, looking into the property, the structure is going to be on the right side. On the left side, we're providing an access lane, a paved access lane to the back of the property, where we're proposing five parking spaces.
And on the existing conditions, Mr. Saveghi, what is the current side yard setback on the side that's, the side that we're going to be continuing the structure on the right side as opposed to the left? What is that existing setback as it's closest to the sideline?
Right now, the existing structure is roughly 15 inches from the property line and the roof eaves and such are within six inches of the property.
Understood. Okay. And in terms of existing site as it pertains to parking or existing access, can you talk a little bit about that?
Basically, it just has a driveway, somewhat of a driveway, pretty much in disrepair. There's a couple of strips of concrete for access for a, a car into the property and the back of the property pretty much is overgrown at the existing condition.
This property originally was a two-family, Mr. Saveghi?
I'm not sure about the history of the, the property, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leff can testify to the elements related to the, the use of the property, but it is a existing two-story framed dwelling. There's also, Mr. Saveghi, I note that there shows a lot of broken brick and kind of like, almost like a broken paver access on the, on the existing conditions as well. Would that be, you know, partly in the right of way and partly on the property? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm assuming.
It ties into the existing sidewalk on the Fourth Avenue.
And I'm assuming they were using that as parking as well?
Yes.
So, you know, as far as the, some of the other existing conditions here, relative to the actual driveways itself, there's really not any kind of concerted parking or driveway access that currently exists. Is that a fair characterization?
That is. That's correct.
So in terms of the existing buffering and fencing, can you talk a little bit about what's present and what we're intending to keep and what?
I'm sorry, this is Russell Lewis for interrupting, but before we get into buffering and fencing and stuff, can we determine what's, what's the current status of this property? What's?
It's vacant.
No, I'm talking about, is it single family, two family, three family? What's its current status?
Okay, if we want to jump ahead, that's fine.
Jump ahead? I'm just trying to get basics here.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Not a problem. So, Mr. Leff, can you please go through?
First, yes, Jack.
Mr. Leff, please raise your right hand. You solemn swear the testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian Leff, L E F F.
Mr. Santori?
Yes, Mr. Leff, can you please walk us through the existing?
Yeah, the.
First, his credentials, Mr. Santori, if you could review.
Professional planner. Why don't we, let's get his credentials.
Yes.
My credentials. I am a graduate from Cook College at University in 1992. I have a bachelor of science degree in environmental planning and design with an option in landscape architecture. I'm currently licensed as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey as well as a landscape architect in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania and Delaware. I've provided testimony for landscape architecture and planning issues throughout the state, including last night in Asbury Park's planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Leff. We accept your credentials. Please proceed. I believe Russell asked, this is currently designated as a two-family? Is that correct?
Yeah, just real quick, I can run through some of the existing conditions and just give a quick overview and then get back to the engineering because there are a lot of things. I don't want to get into the meat of my testimony because there are some things that need to be on the record to avoid being confusing before I can make certain conclusions. But just going through what we have now, the tract is known as Block 2805, Lot 5, within the City of Asbury Park, commonly known as 704 Fourth Avenue. The subject tract is 7,500 square feet. It's currently occupied with an abandoned two-story, single-family residential structure. All surrounding uses are residential in nature. To the west, you have Lot 4, which is a single-family structure. To the east, you have Lot 6, which has three units. Also to the east, you have Lot 7, which is also a three-unit building on 3,750 square feet. To the south, you have Lot 11, which is three units on 7,500 square feet. Again, to the south, Lot 12 is three units on 3,750 square feet. And then we have Lot 13, which is a single-unit lot. The tract is located within the R2, two to four family residential zoning district. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the tract with a three-unit residential building with associated off-street parking and landscaping. The proposed use is permitted within the R2 zoning district. However, while the use is consistent with the land development goals of the city, some relief from the land development ordinance is being sought tonight. That relief includes a density variance where a maximum of 17 units per acre is permitted and 17.4 acres are proposed, a floor area ratio where a maximum of 0.5 is permitted and 0.732 is proposed, a buffer width, a minimum of five feet required, whereas three feet is provided, driveway setback distance where a minimum of five feet is required and again, three feet is provided. We also have relief for a minimum parking lot landscape area where a minimum of 10% of the interior of a parking area is required to be landscaped. And right now, we're not proposing any. We're seeking relief for maximum building cover where 25% is permitted and approximately 29% is being proposed. As the plan show now, we're seeking a front yard setback variance for 25 feet is required and 20 feet is provided. However, we're going to give some testimony and I think that variance is going to go away. We also, as noted in the planner's report, we have a number of off-street parking spaces. And again, I'm going to provide some testimony later on. I'm not sure that variance is actually required. And then there is relief for parking stall size where eight feet is provided and eight and a half feet is required by ordinance and nine feet is required by RSIS. Once more, we're, we have some ideas to increase that parking, so I believe that waiver is also going to go away. The application includes the elimination of an existing side yard setback variance along the western property line, excuse me, where a six-foot setback distance is required and 1.3 setback foot setback is existing. The roof lines of both buildings are even closer to that particular property line. And that's really the crux of what, what we're here for tonight. And as I mentioned, I think there's testimony from the engineer and architect that need to be on the record that I'm not qualified to speak to before I can draw conclusions.
I appreciate that, Mr. Leff.
I actually, I appreciate that as well. That was a very informative introduction and I appreciate all that information. It's going to help everyone on this board understand what you guys are doing. If we had that information first, please proceed.
Absolutely.
So, Mr., getting back to Mr. Saveghi a moment. And I think actually we have to address Mr. Lewis's question and I, I've been, I apologize, I was distracted a second. I was checking with my client in some texts just to get some additional information regarding the history of the property. And to his knowledge, which we can have him, you know, go through and we'd like to have him testify to it, but just as a quick response, the place has been gutted for probably the last four years. So it's very difficult to tell what the most recent use may have been and what the density was of that particular use. To the best of his knowledge, it was a rooming house or a boarding house years back. And right now, internally, it's just gutted into the stud. So there's really not much more to indicate relative to what, what it was being done. Certainly if anybody who's lived there.
Mr. Santori, will this property be owner occupied?
This property is going to be rented. It'll be three apartment units, well, townhouse units that'll be rentals.
Townhouse, you mentioned? Or is that what you said?
They're technically classified as townhouses given the fact that they're, if you, and Mr. Leff can testify this under the ordinance, but we've had some discussions relative to it based upon the two-story living access and elements, but they are considered rental units.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. Please proceed.
So, Mr. Saveghi, can you please walk us through some of the, we went through a lot of the existing site plan. And can you talk a little bit about what we're proposing? Some of the setbacks that we're looking at as well as the, particularly the driveway?
Well, Brian covered some of the information as far as what we're proposing, but essentially what we're, aside from the building and the setbacks to the building, on the, the building on the left side is, we're proposing a six-foot setback on the, in the front side, 20 feet, but really to the building itself is 25 feet. The access aisle is 10 feet wide on the left side of the building or on the, I guess, east side of the building, there's a three-foot strip between the.
Mr. Saveghi, may I interrupt you for one second? Do you have any documents you can share with us on the screen as you, as you talk about the setbacks and?
I think this, the site plan, I'm referring to the site plan. I'm assuming that the board members all have a copy of the site plan.
But it would be good if you could bring it up on the screen as well.
Hmm, let me see if I can do that. Can we switch to the architect and then let me get my arts and crafts kind of in line?
Arena, can you help us out with that? To get what documents he's referring to?
Yes, I'm going to just put the site plan on the screen. And then, Mr. Saveghi, when you have it ready, if you can please take over because I can't take notes while I have, have it on the screen.
Sure, sure. I appreciate it.
So in order to share your screen, have the document open. Click on the green share screen button at the bottom of your screen and then choose the document that you want to show.
Got it.
And just one moment, let me get that up. Sorry.
Let me just get.
In the interest of moving the application forward, I can proudly introduce the site and rely on Frank for the engineering support for any technical issues that may come up. I believe I can share the screen, I can share the site plan at this point.
If you could bring it up, Mr. Leff, that's fine. I just want for our viewing audience as well to see what Mr. Saveghi is.
Okay. Like Irene already did it.
Okay.
Okay, just let me know what page you want me to go to, Mr. Saveghi?
I guess the best, the best sheet that illustrates what we're proposing would be Sheet 3.
Is this correct? This is, what, what sheet is it called? Is it the grading, grading plan?
That's correct. At least the plan.
Grading and utility plan?
Yes.
Okay.
These are all marked as well, Arena?
This is, I'm sorry. This is pre-marked. As Exhibit A2.
Okay.
Pardon me, this is Donna. Arena, actually, if you can go back to, yeah, it's numbered Sheet 3, but it's called Site and Landscape Plan with, with construction details. I think that better shows the layout with the, some of the.
Miss Miller, that is the proper sheet, the page.
Okay, I'm muted. I'm sorry about that. Okay, I'm sorry, Donna, which page is it?
Sheet 3.
Sheet 3 of 6, which is on the very bottom corner, it's marked site. It says Site and Landscape Plan with Construction Details.
That's a little more readable. There you go. You can see the driveway and, yeah.
Yes, much better.
There we are.
So as you speak, Mr. Saveghi, if you could point out what your, what each area that you're talking about?
He, I'm sorry, Chris, he can't point it out because it's my screen, but once he has it ready, he can, he can do that.
Okay.
Help is on its way, so I'll be able to actually get it on the screen here.
All right, I'll try to follow along as best I can.
So, Mr. Saveghi, can you walk us through the proposed conditions as shown on Sheet 3 of 6?
As the board members can see, again, you know, standing on Fourth Avenue, looking into the property, we're basically situating the proposed two-story building with the three units on the right side of the, of the property and the asphalt driveway that is going to provide the access to the back of the site where the parking spaces are located on the left side. Starting on the right side, we're providing a six-foot offset between the proposed building and the right property line. We're, we're providing 25 feet of offset from the right-of-way line of Fourth Avenue and the front of the building. On the left side, we're providing a three-foot separation between the proposed curb and the actual property line. There's an existing fence there. The idea is to upgrade that fence. On the back side, we have obviously the building. We're providing a three-foot space between the, the back building line and the, where the parking starts, where the curb starts. From there, we're proposing a 25-foot wide aisle for the cars and then parking spaces that are eight foot by 19 feet deep. There's landscaping and shrubbery proposed on the. There's landscaping and shrubbery proposed on the west side of the parking lot and on the south side of the parking lot, adjacent to lots 11, exactly, 11 and 12.
So, are each of these units have their own separate entrances, Mr. Sevegi?
They do, and the architect can specifically talk about the layout of the buildings and the location of the doors and windows and such.
Right, I can appreciate that, yes.
And I, I think it's very important at this point in time, Mr. Sevegi, we had an opportunity to have some conference calls today in response to some of the professional reports that we received from the board's professionals, is that correct?
That's correct.
And part of that relates to the front yard determination setback variances with the 20-foot front yard. As you aptly pointed out, that the porch is five feet, 20 foot from the porch to the property line, giving a 20-foot technical setback from the porch, the porch being an uncovered porch, which was delineated as a necessity for an additional variance, correct?
That's correct.
And as, as in response to that, and I know we haven't gotten to obviously the architectural designs and elements, but you are familiar within our conversations that we talked about putting a front porch in character with some of the other homes in the area that's been reflected in the, in Ms. Miller's report, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, as we sit here looking at the existing site conditions, these existing, the proposed site conditions, those proposed site conditions were obviously reflected prior to receipt of any of the board's comments. And as a result of that, we had not had listed a, you know, a front yard variance request, correct?
That's correct.
And now, in response to some of those comments by adding that porch, we once again will not need any additional relief for front yard setback, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, just one point, Mr. Santori. You're proposing five spaces for these three units, correct, by parking spaces?
That is correct.
If I understand, each of these units are going to have three bedrooms each?
Each, each one is a three-bedroom unit, that's correct.
So, that's nine bedrooms. Does that follow our, our overall need for parking in terms of?
Well, the answer to the question really was what Mr. Leff can address, but relative to your ordinance and based upon our interpretation of it, you need 1.5 spaces per, for a total of 4.5 spaces, so we actually exceed the parking criteria under your ordinance. There may be a slight discrepancy relative to the RSIS, which we would ask a de minimis waiver from, but as it pertains to the ordinance criteria, it's our opinion that we actually meet it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santori.
No problem. So, I, I just wanted to point out that one issue relative to the front setback, so we don't get caught on this path that we're heading in the wrong direction. We will not be seeking, based upon our revision, any front yard variance relief necessities, as I understand the, in response to Ms. Miller's requirement, because we will put a fully covered porch on that more in keeping. So, we can look at some of that stuff. I know while those exhibits, we couldn't get them in in advance because we only were able to look at that report today and, you know, late yesterday. So, we do have some responses to that which we can address. Now, Mr. Sevegi, you had a-
Hold on, hold on, I have like three questions before you go any further. Can we swear, Donna, and please?
Sure. Donna, where are you? I can't see her.
Even know where I am.
Please raise your right hand.
Layout, okay, there we go, here I am.
Please raise your right hand. Thomas, we're a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Okay.
Thank you. Donna, can you explain, I know this has come across a few times, the front yard setback? Does that include the deck or does it not?
So, hopefully we'll get better testimony from the architect, but it sounds like they're planning on putting a roof over that entire wooden platform on the east, sorry, north side of the building, which would constitute a front porch as defined in the ordinance. And those front, that type of front porch is exempt or is allowed to project five feet into the required front yard setback. So, if that, as you see on the site plan, proposed wood porch and stairs, if that is covered yet open, that would meet the definition of a porch in the ordinance and would be allowed to project five feet into the front yard setback.
And the front yard setback's 25 feet, correct?
Right, so the way it's designed right now, it's encroaching five feet. You have 20 feet between that and the front property line. So, if they put a cover, if they put a roof on it, it, that's a permitted exception.
Okay, thank you. My second question, maybe this is for the architect, but I need to know more why this building isn't able to be rehabilitated? Because I'm looking at, I walked by it today and I know the windows are boarded up, but I've been looking at the street view and pretty sure there are people living there just in 2018. And it looks like there's not a lot of structural damage to it. So I just want to hear more, before we even get into this, why are you knocking it down?
I think that's going to be the architect's testimony.
Right, and this is Donna again. I, I know they just testified or, well, actually it was a statement made by the attorney, so it's not technically testimony. But, yeah, I've been on, I've been on the property recently. I've looked at the history of Google Street View, which actually has a few years of history. Saying the property's been vacant or abandoned or unoccupied for four years is not accurate. So, I wish we did have, you know, some information from either the Building Department or, you know, Code Enforcement on Occupancy, either transfer title information that would give us, you know, dates and number of units. But I think it's incorrect to say that the property was, hasn't been occupied in four years.
I agree. On Google View, if you go there, the front door is open and someone is standing in the front yard and that's 2018.
And there's a for-sale sign in the front yard.
I also, I also walk by that house a lot. I do a lot of walking around town and until recently, it's, it looked like somebody had been living there. I mean, I've been, I've been here for a few years, but it doesn't, I, I've seen houses that look like they're about to fall apart in this town and that does not strike me as one of them.
I think that it, I know that there's a lot of-
Not an architect.
I know there's a lot of conjectures to what it is, obviously, and I certainly can have my client who purchased the property, who did his diligence relative to it. It's obviously a little hard from our perspective and I know you guys have a lot of questions, but we obviously have a lot of information to get out. I have hours of it and I can't answer every single question at one time. So, I can jump around, it's not a problem. We have no problem answering as they come or I could stick with the plan. You tell me what your preference is.
I, I think the best way to go is to take one witness or testimony at a time, Mr. Santori. We can, let's finish up with the engineer and if anyone has questions specifically to the engineer's testimony, we could take it from that standpoint rather than jump from person to person. We have to be able to allow the public as well to provide questions to each witness as well. So, I, I think jumping around is a little difficult.
Yep, and I, I agree and I just, obviously I have different people with different answers. I can't testify to everything that's not my position, so I certainly-
I understand.
... answer each question, but I, I would like to just stick with the engineer to go through the conditions and then we'll go from there.
That's fine. Donna, you have a question? I can see you raise your hand.
Thank you. Yes, this is Donna Miller, I have a question. So, Mr. Santori, who is going to be the professional who will address the off-street parking calculation? Is that going to be Mr. Leff or Mr. Sevegi?
I think it's going to be Leff.
So that's why I was asking that as well, Donna. I wanted to know who, who came up with that.
Sorry for asking. Chris, can I just ask you a quick question though?
I'm sorry, we could certainly have Mr. Sevegi testify to that as well because he obviously, they, they generated the, the site plan, but we could have it answered from both professionals, to be honest.
Chris?
Please, go ahead, Brittany.
And not to, you know, I, I know what you just said, you want to hear this witness, but I honestly don't even, I think this, we're getting ahead of ourselves. I don't even know why we need the site plan and everything if the building can be rehabilitated.
The applicant is allowed to proceed the way he chooses. And they are going to put a witness in that will discuss those points, but he still has to put in these engineering details as part of this application.
Okay.
This is Donna out there. Right, and it's a permitted use. You can't, you know, say, you can't have something that's a permitted use. I am curious though, Mr. Leff might be the guy to go to right now though to give us the best overview of the proposed improvements development and how they, you know, arrived at the parking calculation. And then when we get into some of the more, you know, nitty-gritty details of how do the parking spaces work, then maybe we'll jump back to the engineer. And then we can get Jason's comments on that. But for now, let's, but I think maybe Mr. Leff can get us.
That's Mr. Santori's call. Plus, we're going to be confusing these witnesses and cross-examination is going to become very difficult for jumping back and forth between witnesses.
I, I agree too.
Let's, let's conclude the testimony of one or the other witness and keep this in an orderly fashion. And I will get to everybody, I understand the questions that are being asked, they have to be answered. But let's, let's proceed in an orderly fashion so I can keep this thing under control.
I agree wholeheartedly, Jack, that was my point. So, let's, let's finish up with, with, with the engineer and then we can move on to the next testimony.
Mr. Santori, I can go through the, the comments that we have from inside engineering in a matter of about seven minutes, real quick.
Can we, can we address, for starters, Mr. Sevegi, because there's been some questions regarding the parking calculation. To the extent that you feel comfortable addressing that as opposed to Mr. Leff from a, from an ordinance perspective, can you indicate how you arrived at the parking calculations based on the site?
We're strictly going by the requirements of the ordinance for townhouses and the requirement, the requirement is 1.5 spaces per unit.
Okay, this is Donna Miller, so that's wrong. This is not a townhouse. It's not a townhouse, it's defined in the ordinance. And it does not meet the criteria for being a townhouse, so you can't use that. It is a multifamily dwelling consisting of three dwelling units, each having three bedrooms. That's how we got to our parking calculation and that is how you should be approaching this.
Okay, well, we can have Mr. Leff address-
I think it would be helpful, there's, there's a couple of things that should probably be put on the record early on. And I understand you don't want to jump around, but there are some things that can be confusing in this application that I think can be, I can add some clarity early on, try and get this moving off that center here.
Who's speaking right now? Please identify.
Oh, this is Brian Leff, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Leff, please hold off on your testimony. I, I would really like to finish, this is now the fourth time I've said this. Let's finish up with the engineer and allow the public to ask questions as well. And we will move on from there. So, please, Mr. Santori.
Mr. Sevegi, can you please walk us through the insight comments and any concerns relative to their engineering review letter?
Obviously, I had the opportunity to go through the Inside Engineering Review Letter dated June 30th, 2020. And it does specifically speak, speak to some changes that need to be, minor changes that need to be made to the plans. We agreed to provide the information that they've requested. I believe it's prudent to just quickly go through certain specific comments that are noteworthy. For site, site plan completeness, comment number six, we will be requesting a waiver from the providing existing utilities within 200 feet. I don't think that's necessary, this property and this location and this block is pretty much all developed. There are no known easements on the property, property, no encumbrances. We're not proposing any signage at this point beyond the typical designation of the property addressed, unit numbers, which pretty much address items seven and eight of Inside Engineering Letter. To address item number 10, the architect will be testifying, I'm assuming following me, and will, will be able to provide information relative to the, to the various utilities. There was a note regarding the AC condensers and the location of the AC condensers. Right now, we're showing three condenser, condensers on the south side of the building, between the building and the parking lot. Clearly, if the board desires for us to change the location of those, we can do that. We can shift those and situate them between us and Lot 4 on the west side of the building. So that is an option. There are several comments within the letter, both in completeness review and development review, which discuss stormwater management. Our approach with this site is currently there is a ridge or a high point sort of in the middle of the property with half of the property draining towards the south side and half of the property draining towards Fourth Avenue. What we're doing is basically the, the way we've graded the property, we're taking all the runoff and forwarding all the runoff and directing it to Fourth Avenue. That, that's what we're proposing.
Mr. Sevegi, as the engineer, did you yourself review the current site in terms of its structural soundness?
From the structural standpoint, is the challenge? No, I didn't, I did not.
So, so who made the determination, if it wasn't you as the engineer, who made the determination that this site had to come down because it was structurally unsound?
I defer to Mr. Santori on that, but I don't know who made that determination.
Obviously, my, my client conducted their review along with the architect, so we will-
So, an architect decided the house was no good, not the engineer?
Did we have a structural engineer to perform an analysis?
Yes.
No, we did not.
Okay. So, your, your engineer did not make any, any evaluation of the current structure at all?
Well, he's, he's a civil engineer, he's not a-
So, you'd never had any, but you're telling me that the, the structure itself, that current structure itself is structurally unsound, it must be replaced. I, I want to know how that determination was made.
They just indicated that our architect in conjunction with my client's review of it, they, it indicated that they didn't want to move forward with this particular dwelling unit as it exists. But as Mr. Serpico indicated, whether that is or is not the case, what we're proposing is a permitted use in the zone.
I understand, all right. I understand that. Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Sevegi. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Sevegi?
Jason, you need to be sworn. Jason?
I'm here.
You need to be sworn in to discuss this?
You can swear in if you want, I'm sure you'll need me eventually, but there's not much for us to say.
Raise your right hand. I'm a swear that any testimony given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, Jason Fisher, Board Engineer.
Okay, go ahead. All right, Mr. Sevegi.
So, do any of the board members have any questions? For Mr. Sevegi? Board professionals, based on his current testimony, any questions?
Well, there's some more comments in the letter. I don't know if you guys want to go through them now or it, it may, it may be more prudent to go through them after Mr. Leff is done.
I agree totally, Jason, I agree. So, let, let's move on. Irina, do we have any, anyone in the public that have any questions for Mr. Sevegi's current testimony?
Yes, I do-
And it must be relevant to his testimony.
Thank you. I do show three participants or callers. And just again, to reiterate, if anyone would like to ask a question relevant to the testimony, please use the raise hand button or dial star nine on your telephone keypad. And we're going to go with Edward first. Edward, go ahead and speak.
Yes, hi, Edward Baumgartner, 706 Fourth Avenue. To Mr. Sevegi, there was a comment that you had made about broken pavers in the front yard and then a comment about the, the driveway not being of current use. How did you arrive at that conclusion? I'm asking because I, because I, I know how, how the broken pavers have got there and I know that the driveway is in use.
It's basically strictly going by the pictures. We actually prepared the- It's basically strictly going by the pictures. We actually prepared the survey, the initial survey for the, for the property. So just looking at the pictures and the notes that we had from the field crew, they're, they're somewhat descriptive and they indicate broken brick in, in, in front of the existing structure.
Correct. There is broken brick in, in the structure, but it was never used for parking. So I'm, I'm curious as how you, you arrived to the conclusion that it was probably used for parking?
I was speaking about the, the concrete strips that are on the, I guess currently on the east side of the, the existing building.
Then I'm mistaken in what you heard. Did, did I also hear correctly you saying that the current driveway was inoperable?
Overgrown. I don't know.
Because the owner has neglected to cut the grass. But yeah, sure. Okay. Overgrown, but, but it is usable as, as a driveway.
Okay.
You're, okay, you're asking.
Do you have any further questions, Mr. Baumgartner?
There was a question about the, about how the runoff was, 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 was going to be treated. Again, that seemed pretty sketchy in terms of, well, we'll do this and it'll go towards Fourth Avenue. I'm curious as how that will work, how, or, or, or how that won't be worse for the storm sewers.
We're capturing the runoff at the proposed stage. The way we've graded the property, the property is pretty flat. But the way we've graded the property, the idea is to capture all the runoff and direct it towards Fourth Avenue. That's reflected on the plans.
Any further questions, Mr. Baumgartner?
No, that's it for Mr. Savegi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Irene, anyone else?
Yes, I'm going to call in Dr. Judith Lee next. Please go ahead. Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. I just saw something that I've never seen before. Okay. Go ahead and speak, Dr. Judith Lee. Hello? Dr. Lee, are you there?
I don't see him.
Her.
Oh, her. Sorry.
But, okay, so I, I believe you're having some technical difficulties. Zoom did state that you had an older version of Zoom. So I'm going to ask that Dr. Lee try to log back on using just through the, through the website, not through the Zoom app or your Zoom account. If you can please do that, and then we will try to call on you again.
Let's move on to the next person, Irene, and we'll come back to Dr. Lee.
Yes, thank you. And the next person is phone number ending in 3350. Go ahead and speak.
Yeah, hi, Ernest Manoli, Asbury Park. I'm a little confused to ask the engineer some questions because the other witness kind of crossed over into some issues. But I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong when I start to ask, if I have to ask the other person. So was it the engineer who was testifying about the condition of the property? That it's considered unreinhabitable or desired not to be rehabilitated? I, I, I'm losing the distinction between it was the architect's decision that the buyer didn't want to rehabilitate the building? Or was it the engineer's proposal to the board that the building is not, I guess the word is, able to be rehabilitated as it stands? Because to me, that's a big difference. And it seems like.
Mr. Manoli, he already testified that he did not make that determination that the building was not.
Okay.
To be, so he, he already determined, he did not determine that.
Okay. Did, did he determine that the, the backyard will be, if it's approved and the three townhomes go in, that the backyard will become parking? Is that correct? Is that the engineer?
That's correct.
Okay. And you talked about the water runoff going to Fourth Avenue?
That's correct.
Right, right now, I'm looking at pictures of the property. It's a very, it's not paved. It's got no pavers back there. It looks like when it rains or wherever the building or other things drain, it would just be absorbed into the ground there. Are, are you proposing that the back will be a parking for, I think you said six cars or five cars? Will it be paved?
Yes.
It'll be paved, okay. Okay, so it'll be paved. And the, the water, as you indicated, you're going to direct it towards Fourth Avenue? What'll bring it towards Fourth? Gravity?
I'm not sure what.
In other words, the back parking lot, the back proposal is to pave the back parking lot for, I believe, six parking spaces for the townhomes. So my question is, when you take away the grass back there, which is permeable, it absorbs all the rain. When you pave it, the water is going to land on that pavement. And, and you're saying you're going to direct it all to Fourth Avenue? I'm just asking you as an engineer, is it, is it gravity movement towards Fourth? Or do you have drains? Or how is the water going to get from all of a sudden a permeable to a completely non-permeable? Because I think you said you don't even want to put the 10% landscaping. So that means all that water that comes down on that big backyard, that's now going to be a parking lot paved, is going to look to shed somewhere. And you're saying it's going to wind up on Fourth. And my question to you as an engineer is, by, by what method is that going to happen? Is it by nature and gravity? Or are you going to put like drains in that back pavement and, you know, a pipe under the ground, what'll go into the curb? Or what's the plan? That's what I'm asking.
Just strictly by grading design. We're not proposing any structures, any stormwater structures.
Okay. And, and will the, the back lot, if I'm looking at the picture and I, I'm trying to envision your, your development, that would mean that the back lot would then drain forward to Fourth? But wouldn't that be where the townhomes are?
No, no, not, not the townhomes. To the left of the townhomes, there is an access lane that we're proposing. So we're going to direct, direct the runoff against the curb line of the access lane towards Fourth Avenue.
Okay, so you're going to direct the fully paved backyard for six spots? Well, I guess you use an asphalt or something not permeable, correct? Or cement or asphalt? And then all that water that lands on there, somehow you're going to direct it towards what is now the existing paver driveway on the left? If I'm looking, I guess the picture is recent, so. So you're saying all of the back is going to somehow wind up moving to the left? And then it's going to move down that, what is now what looks like a driveway? I don't know what that is.
Mr. Manoli, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. I'm asking how all that water in that big backyard, once the townhomes are there, is going to get around the townhomes, over to the left, and come down onto Fourth? That, to me, seems like you might need a water traffic policeman or something.
That's a question. That was a good question. Engineer, answer the question.
The answer is with grading design, we can provide, basically, if you look at the spot grades that we're showing on the site plan, the idea is to create a high point in the back right corner of the property and direct all the runoff towards the access lane and towards Fourth Avenue. That's what we're proposing. And your engineer has reviewed the plans.
Okay, okay, I get it. So now I'm looking, I see the back. But once the structures are there, how, how will the water, from the high point in the back right, how will all that water? I guess, are you saying you're going to slope it to the existing driveway? And then it's going to make a left-hand turn and it's going to come down the driveway?
Mr. Manoli, if I may interject, because I think, I think you're not looking at the plans and I think that's part of the issue. Do you see the actual proposed site plan? So you have a, you have a driveway that goes, connects Fourth Avenue directly from Fourth Avenue to the rear of the property. So there's one contiguous driveway along the left of the property that will be brand new, that will take you from Fourth Avenue directly to the back parking area, which is not six spaces, but it's, it's five spaces, okay? To be, to be correct, because there's been a lot of times you're mentioning six, six. So if you look at the, if you could see the screen now in front of you, you'll see that the water that Mr. Savegi's been testifying to, he's going to grade accordingly so that the general flow is going to take from the, from the parking area to the driveway area out onto Fourth Avenue. So forget about what you see existing. It's the proposed conditions that we're discussing now.
I get it. So, so that the engineer, I'm sure, so as not to affect the neighbors, must have provided some kind of water, water runoff, non-permeability feasibility study, right? That's probably included because otherwise, you know, if this whole plan, you start to include wind and, and who knows what? You know, parked cars and tires and people and.
You're, you're testifying, Mr. Manoli.
No, no, I'm saying, what I'm saying is.
Please ask a question.
All right, was there a, a water runoff study done?
Dr. Savegi provided drainage calculations, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the one that, that you proposed? You're going to pitch the back right, the waters, okay. So there is a, a water runoff study. And did that study suggest or call for any drains in that back paved area, once it's paved?
No, sir.
Okay. Did it propose anything about, if I'm looking at the picture correctly, I guess you're going to take down what's there. How are you going to separate the parking lot from the neighbor's backyard? Is, is there going to be like a new fence or a wall put up around it or?
There is some new fencing. There's some existing fencing. Plus, we're proposing brand-new curb that's going to wrap around the entire parking lot and the access lane.
Oh, I get it. So that, God forbid, in the event that a, a car backed up or tried to, you know, I don't know, not, not maneuver correctly, something will block it from going into the neighbor's yard or house? I think that's a question.
Can you repeat that? I, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so you're going to have five cars back there. They're going to get in on one driveway. Once they're in the back, it's a bigger spot. It's going to be paved, right? You're saying there's going to be no landscaping. You talked about the drainage. Now what I'm, once the five cars are back there, they're going to have to maneuver around to get out, correct? There's only one egress access, right? That driveway?
Correct.
Okay, so now when they're in the back, they're maneuvering. Is there any safety thing in this fence and wall that you're talking about? That'll prevent them from, I don't know, accidentally backing into the neighbor's backyard or?
There's curbing proposed around the entire perimeter of the parking lot, as well as the two sides of the driveway.
Okay. All right. Because again, I seem to be looking at current pictures and it looks like all the neighbors have big yards and now all of a sudden they're going to be.
That's the plan, Ernest.
All right. So, and in this feasibility study for the back engineering for this five cars, you've already figured out how they get in, get out, turn around, everything?
Yes, sir.
It all works?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is it planned on full-size cars?
It's planned for regular cars. And if somebody has a larger car, obviously there, there has to be a spot designated for, you know, the, the larger, a Hummer or something, a larger SUV.
Right. So, so three units with three bedrooms with five parking spots onboard on the property, correct?
That's what's being proposed. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manoli.
Thank you, Mr. Manoli. And let's go back to Dr. Judith Lee. Let's try this again. And it's not, it's not letting me allow you to speak. I'm sorry, Dr. Lee.
Can she call in?
Yes, you're going to have to try to call in to the meeting. They are in the meeting instructions. Please try that. And I'm going to call on the next person while you do that. And that is Joel Cohen. Go ahead and speak.
Hi, Mr. Savegi. I'm just curious, are you involved in litigation in Jackson Township regarding improper public notice currently?
Okay, that, that, that's not part of his testimony, Mr. Cohen.
It speaks to his credentials, I believe.
I'm not aware of any.
Mr. Cohen, I, I've muted you. We're only taking questions relevant to the current testimony. Do you have another question?
I believe it speaks to his credentials, which were part of this testimony.
Are you questioning his credentials?
I'm, I'm questioning part of the background of his experience. I'm just asking if he's involved in this litigation in Jackson Township regarding improper public notice, which may come up as an issue further on in testimony.
I'm not aware of any involvement with Jackson Township on improper notice, Mr. Cohen. If you know a specific project that we're, are we the, representing a developer in Jackson Township? I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about, to be honest with you.
In April 2020, the New Jersey Builders Association and Shore Builders of Central New Jersey filed a lawsuit.
Is this, should we allow this?
Well, I mean, if, if there's a notice issue of an, regarding an application, that, what does that have to do with his credentials?
Exactly.
Just getting it on record that he was, that he's involved in, in litigation related to notice. Should it come up later in this conversation that, that.
Irene, please do.
Yeah, I've already reviewed the notices for this application. You were on the list of people who received notice and everyone else within 200 feet received notice. It was published in the Asbury Park Press and the notices were proper.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to Dr. Judith Lee.
Well, you may have other questions. You may have other questions.
Oh. Mr. Cohen, do you have any other questions relevant to the testimony?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's try this again. Nope, still no, no luck. I did see one phone caller call in, but now they're gone again. What would you like to do, Mr. Avelloni?
Jack, do we need to get ahold of Dr. Lee or how do we proceed?
If she can't call into the meeting, we're going to have to proceed and try and see if we can figure out a way to get her access. If, if we've got, if she can't get in based on Zoom and she can't get in via telephone, I don't know how else she's going to get in. Why can't she get in by telephone?
Right. Can Dr. Lee call in?
Let me, let me, let me just try this, Jack, just to make it easy for everyone. I'm going to post the phone number and the instructions on the screen.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Please do, Irene.
She was actually, she was on at some point. I saw her.
Yeah, yeah, I saw her video too. All right, let's try this.
While we're waiting, am I allowed to read the question, Mr. Savini?
Mr. Harris, you have a question for Mr. Savegi? Go, go right ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Savini, when you're talking about the runoff coming on the Fourth Avenue, are you going to have gutters on the house to direct the water in that direction?
Yes, sir. In fact, that was one of the questions that was raised in the report that Inside Engineering produced for, with regards to this application. And yes, we're going to address the, the gutters and really all the other issues. I didn't get the opportunity to speak to that. There are some minor issues that were brought up, design issues that we're going to also address.
Now, some of that, are you going to have one main gutter coming down into the driveway? Or are you going to have at least two gutters coming down on the front of the house on both sides?
We'll, we'll probably go with the two, two gutters, one on each side of the building.
So then one will be coming down into the grass area?
That's correct.
Okay, well, you have a. Okay, will you have a pipe running to the sidewalk catching that water?
If you can just repeat that.
Will you have a flexible pipe catching that water coming out, or will it just run into the grass?
No, we're going to have the flexible piping directing all that runoff to Fourth, Fourth Avenue, that was one of the comments that was brought up on, uh, that was in the Inside Engineering's report.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, Irene, it might, just, uh, so that she understands, uh, make that announcement to Dr. Lee.
Thank you. Dr. Lee, I have up on the screen your, the phone numbers to dial in on your telephone, landline, or cellphone, and I'm going to just say them out loud in case you can't see the screen, try dialing area code 929-205-6099, and then the telephone will prompt you to enter the meeting ID 940-7088-5150, then press pound. I'll leave that up on the screen for another moment, and let's see. Okay, I do have a caller that hasn't been identified, let's see if it's her, go ahead and speak.
Yeah, hello?
Yes, is this Dr. Lee?
Thank you, that was very difficult. I started to call in, in relationship to the question of the condition of the building, and I wanted to say that my husband and I have lived next door for six years, and I know Ryan Conti, who was the owner, who bought it from the original family owner.
You, you must ask the question to Dr., to, to-
No, this, but this goes, but I was disconnected when this subject was on the floor, and I want to pre-
Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lee, I had to mute you just one second, the chairman is trying to get a word in, this time right now is only for asking direct questions to Mr. Seveghi based upon his testimony, you will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, as well as all of the other public participants, to comment or share any testimony, do you understand, and do you have a question?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
I have something, please, I wasn't sure if Mr. Cohen was finished with his questions, we-
He, he was finished, Jack, he, he did say he was finished.
Oh, okay, all right, I want to make sure I didn't cut him off, okay.
No, you didn't.
And Dr. Lee, if you would like to make a comment, please stay on the meeting until the end, when we announce that it's public comment period, thank you.
So, I, I still see two hands raised, Irene, but-
No, I didn't, I didn't lower them, Chris, so we can move on.
Okay.
And let's try that, okay?
All right, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, one, I'm sorry, Chris, Mr. Baumgarten is raising his hand again, so-
Right, he, he doesn't get a second round, he doesn't get a second round of questions.
No second questions, Jack?
That's correct, you ask your questions, and when you're done, you're done.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Baumgarten, please wait for your next turn or the next-
I think we're going to be calling this witness back, so I got a feeling we're going to be going through the same questioning later on, all the witnesses, all the-
Yeah, more than likely, we will ask Mr. Seveghi to come back, uh, and provide additional testimony, so let's move on, um, Mr. Santori, please call your next witness.
Thank you, I think to, um, perhaps tie together some of the history of the use of the property, before we even get into the architect, let me bring in the applicant a moment to just go through a little bit about their diligence, so we can get maybe a couple of those questions answered in, in short order, and then we'll move on to Mr. Contador, so I'd like to bring in Tara Hannah at this point in time, um, on behalf of the entity.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand, you solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Tara Hannah, T-A-R-A, last name Hannah, H-A-N-N-A.
Okay, you can lower your hand, and Mr. Santori will take over from there.
Yes, um, how are you familiar with this property?
Um, so we purchased it in 2019, July of 2019, from John, who purchased it in 2017, he purchased it, um, and informed us that it was a boarding house before he had purchased it, and when he got it in his, um, when he owned it, he completely gutted it, so by the time we purchased it, there was nothing inside the house, so there's no way of knowing what it was.
So who did you purchase it from, Ms. Hannah?
Uh, John, uh, what was his name?
Biondo.
Biondo.
The gentleman to your left has to be sworn in if he's going to answer on the record.
Yes. Why don't you swear him in as well, Jack?
Sir, do you mind being, do you mind me just one in? Please raise your right hand, you solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Joseph, J-O-S-E-P-H, last name Hannah, H-A-N-N-A.
Okay, let, now, for a matter of procedure, let's be careful, because we're already an hour and 20 minutes into the application, and we haven't gotten very far, so I don't, I, I really don't want to be jumping from witness to witness and back and forth, we're never going to be able to keep track of the cross-examination, so if you have specific questions for Ms. Hannah or Mrs. Hannah, please ask her, we'll get some cross-examination, and then Mr. Hannah can be questioned thereafter, because I got to get some cohesiveness to this, or it's going to take us some, it's going to take us forever to get-
I, I agree completely, Jack.
As do I.
Okay.
So Ms. Hannah, you indicated a little bit about the history of it, to your knowledge, when you decided to come forth with this application, you had done some due diligence and analysis of this particular property, correct?
Yes.
And as part of that due diligence, you consulted with Mr. Contador?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about what occurred during those conversations and discussions, and specifically about the positioning of the property on the lot, as well as the integrity of the structure and what you reviewed inside?
Right, so, um, what we spoke about is that for us to get the existing structure up to code, it would almost be building another house, and that how close it is to the neighbor house, you'd never be able to get it up to the fire codes that are up today.
Okay, and that was part of your decision-making process, plus in addition, you, you had sought, you decided to develop the property in a specific way in accordance with the permitted elements of the ordinance, correct?
Right.
Okay, um, I really don't want to get too, too much into beyond that, for them, I just wanted to give a little bit of the background and history, um, to, you know, and then obviously we'll get into Mr. Contador.
Okay.
Does anybody have any question about their use of it?
I have no questions for Ms. Hannah or Mr. Hannah, um, does anybody on the board?
I have a couple of questions, hi, Mrs. Hannah, Russell Lewis here, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, so-
Love your place, by the way, Watermark is awesome.
Oh, well, thank you very much. So you, um, you said you bought this property just last year from Mr. Biondo, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and he bought it in 2017 or so, you remember, he said he owned it for a couple of years, right? And he, he's the one that demolished it, that's your testimony?
Oh, he gutted the inside, the structure's still there.
The structure's still there, and just for clarification, so there's a single structure, is there a structure in the back, or is there only one building on the property?
Only one building.
There's just one building, okay, and you're not aware of its history of being a single-family, or a multifamily, or two-family, or a boarding house, you don't understand any of the history, you bought this property gutted from Mr. Biondo last year, basically?
Right, I only understand what I was informed by him.
Great.
Not go too far with what other people said, because it's way out in the world here.
Understand, um, I'm just trying to get sort of a, you know, an understanding of, you know, how this, yeah, um, I, I know a little bit about this property, I'm friendly with Mr. Biondo, and I remember when he owned this property, so I come with some understanding and some history of this property as well, um, so, um, okay, um, uh, do we have as a, uh, turning to our city professionals and Irene, do we have any information on the history of this property, and what it was used, and how it was, if, you know, what its status has been prior to 2017, when Mr. Biondo possibly purchased this?
December of 2017.
December of 2017?
That's correct.
Oh.
I can add, I can add one more thing from the public record, just for purposes of just trying to tie up a couple things, in 2012, the prior owner, Mr. Robel, which is W-R-O-B-L-B-E-L, um, died, at which time the property, um, was transferred into the surrogate, the surrogates court appointed an administrator for the particular estate that sat in the estate ownership until 2017, which was December 5th of 17, when, when Mr. Biondo purchased it, and then obviously we purchased it in, in July of 19.
We, we still don't have any determination of an official status of this property in 2012, or 17, or 19, we still-
I'm somewhat confused, it's not an application for a use variance.
Okay.
So the history of the property, they're allowed to redevelop the property, any, you know, so long as it's within the ordinance?
All right, then I will, um, I'll-
I'm not so sure how much, how relevant the prior use of the property is to the current application.
You know what, you're absolutely right, Jack, I will back off on my questioning, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Hannah, and obviously in light of what Mr. Serpico had said, I think that, um, we certainly can move over to the architect to get through some of the particulars of the site, if that's acceptable.
We have to find out if any members of the public have any questions for Mrs. Hannah, based, limited to her testimony. She, she testified, she's subject to cross.
Okay, um, Jack, I do show two raised hands, Mr. Baumgarten, do you have a question for Ms. Ha, Mrs. Hannah? Go ahead.
Yes, 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 um, I have a couple of questions, my first question is, um, upon, did, did, besides taking the seller's word for granted, did you make any attempt to find out, um, uh, more about the history of, of, of the house and its usage, I understand that it might not be pertinent, but it is, but this is testimony.
I would just object to the relevance, Mr. Serpico.
Sustained, Mr. Santori.
Thank you.
So my second question is, um, did, when you were looking at this house and made the determination yourself that it would have been prohibitive to rehabilitate the, the house, uh, did you, um, uh, did you take into, to, into account at all the neighboring properties and neighborhood, what was surrounding it, it being single-family homes?
So I think because of the neighboring property is why we chose to, um, you know, knock down and build a new structure because of how close it is, we would never be able to, um, withstand the fire safety regulations that there is, um, in 2020, as opposed to when this house was built many, many years ago, um, so that was taken into account, um, I'm not sure what else was part of that question.
You didn't really answer my question about, uh, uh, take, take, taking in, in, into account, uh, what the, um, what the usage and character of the neighbor, of, of the neighborhood and neighboring houses are.
The usage of the houses is irrelevant, if they're coming in for a permitted use, which is a two-to-four-family zone, and we have a planner that can correct me if I'm wrong, applicants, they may have the right to develop the property with up to four-
This is yet another question, if the zoning is two-to-four families, why does one-family housing exist within it?
It is not, that's, that question is not for this application or for this witness, it's-
It's not for the law or witness, but it doesn't-
You're going to let me answer, or I'm going to mute you, okay? The law says she can put a two-to-four-family residence on the property, that's, that's the, that's the answer that I have for you. Subject to board approval with variances and the like, it's a permitted use, it may not be a permitted use as a townhouse project, which I think is going to be vetted out at some point between the two planners, a board planner and the applicant's planner, but that area, as far as I know, allows two-to-four-family uses.
Well, sir, that speaks directly to my question, because, you know, because that does-
That answers your question.
Yeah, no, no, that, that does speak to, directly to it, because this is a, this is a townhouse, whereas surrounding properties are not.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to vet that, it doesn't matter that-
Okay, okay.
There are surrounding properties that are multifamily, even if they were all single-family residents there, if the ordinance permits two-to-four family, an applicant can come in and apply for a two-to-four family.
Thank, um, thank you, if, if, if I may, I'd like to add, I, um, uh, I might like to ask you as, as, as attorney, after this, this hearing, a little more clarification on that.
No, I'm giving it to you now, I'm not going to discuss this application outside the context of the-
This is not about the application, this is about zoning.
Then I, that's not what I'm here for.
Okay.
That you can ask the zoning officer about downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's where you go for that answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
No more questions this time.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, any further raised hands for Ms. Hannah, Irene?
Yes, Mr. Minnoli, go ahead and speak.
Oh, yeah, hi, uh, the testimony was that, uh, the house structure couldn't be, refurbished, because it's too close to the neighboring house, and I'm looking at the picture, it is kind of close, but the point is, um, if, if it were to be refurbished, it, it would be grandfathered in the way it is, isn't it? I mean, wouldn't have to, wouldn't have to get a new fire, uh, approval, since it's already there.
I was just, I have a question, Mr. Serpico.
Well, the question is, the question is, as it was stated, it's, it's, your testimony was that the option to refurbish it was not on the table, because it wouldn't meet the 2020 fire code because of its proximity to the neighboring house, and so my question to you is, what if you just kind of refurbished it the way it is? It, it's, it's, it's already in existence, so it's, I don't understand how you say that they would, the reason you have to put the ground on-
Your testimony, Mr. Minnoli, was to bringing it up to code.
Yeah, it's not under the fire code.
Okay, well, let, let me, it, it's already up to code, isn't that correct, Ms. Hannah?
No.
For what it is?
No.
It's not?
No.
Wasn't it, wasn't it just, I thought it was just, uh, a year or so ago inhabited with people?
No, we've owned it for a year already.
But prior to that, weren't there people living there?
Prior to that, it was fully gutted, and there was no people living in there.
So, but I thought you testified that prior to the prior owner, it was occupied, and my point is, and I'm asking you as, as a question, if the structure as it is now had occupants, and the previous, previous owner-
It doesn't have occupants.
Had the building the way it is, why would you say that you were told by the fire code that if you tried to rebuild it the way it is?
Yeah, we're, we're, it's totally irrelevant, I keep saying, you gotta, I gotta keep telling you, the applicant does not have to justify to us why the applicant wants to take the house down.
That's not my question, my question was-
I'm telling, you're quite, you're asking her about the code, all of it is irrelevant, the applicants have the right to come in and apply, mute him, please, the applicant has the right to come in, apply for what they've applied for, and the board decides whether or not to grant it, they don't have to justify whether or not they should refurbish the existing structure or not, they don't have to use the existing structure, they are allowed to put two-to-four families there, as long as they comply with the city ordinances, and the fact that there's all this discussion about whether or not the house can be refurbished or not, is not the basis for, we're not, they're not looking for a use variance, at least not at this point, anyway.
Sorry, Jack, I think I opened that can of worms, I quickly remembered it's not a use variance, so sorry.
Well, I added to that, so I apologize as well, but, um, I, I completely understand where we are right now, that, you know, ground, ground, ground rules have been changed.
Yes.
This is-
Donna's here, Donna can certainly jump in and correct me if I'm mischaracterizing.
This is not a use variance.
Right, okay, all right. Okay. Next question.
So do we have any further questions, Irene, from the public for Ms. Hannah?
Mr. Minnoli, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I, I'm looking for an answer to my question, Mr. Serpico went off on something, I'm not asking, I'm asking, oh, you know, Mr.-
I already told you, your question is irrelevant. It's an irrelevant question. Mute him if he doesn't ask another question that's relevant to the other testimony of the witness. Let's move on to the next questioner.
Do you have another direct question for Mrs. Hannah?
Yeah, I do, but Mr. Serpico prevents.
Try it again. Do you have another direct question for Mrs. Hannah?
The way Mr. Serpico, not the way Mr. Serpico.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
All right. Thank you, um, Ms. Hannah. Uh, let's move on, Mr. Santori.
Yes, uh, can we bring in Mr. Daniel Condatore, please?
Please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
We state your name for the record and spell it.
Uh, Daniel Condatore, C O N D A T O R E.
Okay.
I don't have the ability to bring, share my screen. I'm having some issues with my computer, so I'm on my phone.
First, Mr. Condatore, could you please review your credentials for the board?
Oh, sure. Uh, I am a registered architect at a state in New Jersey. I've been licensed since 2008. I do a lot of work. My office is based in Esberry Park. I presented on several projects in front of the planning board, and I appeared in front of the zoning board, I believe, two or three years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Condatore. Your credentials are accepted. Please proceed. So who's going to be able to share their.
I'm sorry, this is Russell. I have to go on the record to say that I do have a existing working relation, relationship with, with Dan, so I just have to go on the record for that.
You gotta step down.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
So Russell has to accuse himself.
Correct.
Russell, I'm going to. And Russell, I'm going to make you an attendee now instead of a panelist, so you can participate.
Uh, and this is Donna. So does that mean we have six eligible members?
Uh, let's count them.
Yeah.
Dan Harris, Jill Potter, uh, Christopher Avalon, Tim Slick, Brittany Ashman, Catherine Minavini, and Christopher Gonzalez. Does that give us seven?
Seven.
So we got seven eligible members.
Okay, I think that's enough. Mr. Condatore, please proceed.
Sure. Uh, like I was mentioning, if anyone was able to pull up the exhibit for me, I was having issues with my computer sharing the screen.
Irene, can you share your screen so that we could see the, his plans for this property?
Sure, Dan, just one second. I'm bringing it up now.
Yeah, you can start with the floor plans, A1.
Okay.
Is it up there yet?
No, just.
Not yet.
Okay. Um, I mean, I could address if you think I should the, some of the questions regarding the existing building structure, if that's relevant, or we pass that?
Why don't you just, for the sake of the board, explain what you found on the existing structure, Mr. Condatore?
Sure. So, you know, when I, when I met Tara and Joseph there, um, like they said, the building has already been gutted. So regardless of the building is standing or not, uh, you have to understand that it has to meet uh current codes, uh whether it's existing. Since the building is fully gutted, there's no C of O that exists. So in order to occupy the, the structure again, you would have to file a building application. And then the work is extensive, when the work becomes extensive enough where it's, you know, you're re, rem, refurbishing the structure, new windows, uh, you get to a certain cost level, over 50% of the structure, the entire house has to be brought up to current codes. And just by looking at the, the existing floor joists, the ceiling joists, the, just the fenestration, the windows, and trying to insulate it for energy code, it just seemed impractical and infeasible to try to bring this thing back. Um, so it, it, there's a big difference when, if it's an occupied structure and nobody gutted it and it was held in place, fine, then you could, you know, reuse it. But at that point, it, it was, it was unoccupiable. Um, and the, uh, you know, the separation and to the existing property line is such that, you know, we would have to create a firewall in between the two structures, which would have been complicated, and it would prevent it us from doing any kind of window fenestrations along that wall for bedrooms. And it just felt like a, a safety hazard. Um, you know, I don't like to, uh, you know, build single, not single, but houses like that uh next to each other. So uh when we looked at the zoning ordinance and, and, and felt what would be feasible for the property, uh, we went through it and understood that um the uses of the property will allow us to do, like you said, a two to four family. Uh, and there's language in error, and I know the planner will get to it, uh, you know, based off the square footage of the property, and the required square footage per unit was 2,500, and we had a 7,500 square foot lot that we determined that we would be able to reconstruct a three-unit multifamily dwelling on here. So um that's kind of how that, that, that whole conversation started and got us to where we, where we are. So I think I can move, move past that uh at this time. So uh on the screen now I have up is the, the, the floor plans that we provided. So um we were aware of the context and the single-family nature of uh the houses adjacent to us. There's uh two houses to the right, um, or three houses to the right, and then there's a small, the next property is like a little house that's set, set way back. You can barely even see it from the street, and then there's a, a large house on the corner. Um, so we were conscious of the feeling of the, the streetscape. And so when we proposed uh this, this uh floor plan, we were trying not to dominate the street and keep the proportions of what was there. Basically, the width of the existing house is very similar to the width of the house that was there prior. Um, and, and that, that front proportion and scale of the existing house and work from there and then kind of work back as you went into the property to kind of, to break up those units. Um, and by doing that, uh, you could see on the, on the first floor, um, the entrance to that unit is maintained on the front. We felt that it was important to have the entry on the front as if, if it was a single-family house. Um, most of the units, the three units are very basic in, in nature as far as there, uh, we have a living space, a kitchen, we have a bedroom and a full bath on that first floor. And then as we uh work our way up, there's a full master on the second floor and a second bedroom. Um, one of the other things that we, we tried to provide, it was outdoor space for the units uh on that second floor. So you could see in the plan, on the second floor plan, uh, we have uh three balconies along the side of the building. That would be the east side, the driveway side, uh, just for area for, for the residents to sit outside, chairs. And then uh on the, uh, the basement plan, we really have access to the basement. Uh, the purpose of the basement itself is just to um provide storage and mechanical space. Uh, it's not, it's not meant to be finished or occupied. It's, there's, it's just concrete walls and concrete floors. Um, and we don't even have the, the, we can't, we can't put a bedroom down there. We don't have the egress capability with the windows and things like that. So it's really meant just to, to be some additional storage space for the, for the, Irene, you go to the next page. So um what you're seeing here is just a, you know, an elevation, uh, front and side elevation of the house. As you can see, uh, you know, we tried to keep that uh single-family look along the street. Uh, we incorporated a front porch and a, and a small roof and working on a very, uh, variation of materials to kind of break up that facade, uh, to keep it from being monolithic. And then along that, that driveway side, um, some of the features of the houses, they have kind of, and the existing house had like a little wing that came out to the east. So we tried to mimic that and create a rhythm to kind of break up the length of that facade there. Uh, and you can see there's, there's a rhythm to
Excuse me.
bump outs. Go ahead.
Chairman, I desperately need a two-minute break.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll make a motion uh for a five-minute recess.
A second.
Irene, you're gonna have to.
Oh.
Irene?
Yes, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Five-minute break.
Thank you.
All right. Um, can we be called back to order, Irene? I can't tell if everybody's back, so.
Mute.
Are we missing anyone?
Irene?
Irene?
Tim, you keep going to different, different surroundings. Your background.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
While, while we're waiting, we, we have a second application on.
We do have a second.
We don't?
We do.
Yeah. What time will we be going to with this application to leave room for the second applicant?
Well, I don't believe that, uh, that the second application will take very long. Maybe if we can get through um the architect.
Okay.
We'll see where we stand from there, Jack.
Okay, okay. Just give the board a heads up, that's all.
Is Irene back? Irene?
I don't believe she's back yet.
Well, technically, it's not five minutes.
As I say, she's taken the whole five minutes, which is okay.
I'm sorry, everyone. I just.
Okay, I'm back.
Oh, thank you, Irene. Uh, do we have everyone now?
I believe so.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Daniel.
Okay, should I?
Mr. Condatore, first we need to be called back to order.
Okay.
Okay, and I will take role again. Christopher Avaloni.
Here.
And Russell Lewis is, Daniel Harris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Brittany Ashman?
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Here.
And Catherine Minavini?
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Irene. Mr. Condatore, sorry for the interruption.
That's quite all right.
And Irene, could you share your screen again for Mr. Condatore?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so I, I was just kind of explaining how we were trying to break up the, that facade uh along the driveway and kind of have these bump outs that are kind of reminiscent of the, the house that was previously there. You can kind of scroll, Irene, to the, the next page. I'll just take a second. So on, on this page, really, I mean, this is the side that abuts um the west side. So you could see the amount of uh windows and fenestrations that we included on this side, which would not have been possible had we um kept the house that tight. So, you know, I, you know, I value natural light as much as possible. So the ability to do that and to create that airspace uh in between is, was important to us. Um, I think.
In your design, Mr. Condatore, you, you, you kind of made it like individual townhouses that are uh, uh, adjoint, right?
Yeah.
So why didn't you design more of a multifamily type of structure?
I am in that vein also, when you're done.
What was that?
I have a question as a follow-up to the chairman when you finish answering this question.
I, I just feel from a, a standpoint, from an architectural design, that this is a more comfortable living, uh, to have a, be able to rent a, a, a space and, but feel like it's more of a home, uh, with a multi-level and having, you know, your master bedroom on the second floor and a living space on, on the lower floor. I felt it was more traditional and, and, you know.
I don't find this traditional at all. I find this quite the opposite. Um, I, I, you know, I, a traditional home is one that looks like a single family, but, you know, may have three units in it or two units in it. I'm not really impressed with your design this way.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I, I thought that the way that we had set this up was, was comfortable and it worked. And I, you know, I worked with the Hannahs on it, and uh we went through several iterations of doing it. And I, I, I didn't, we didn't think that taking the approach of trying to make one, like, kind of grand house and then splitting it up was something that uh we felt uh we wanted to do on, on this site. So that's.
And also by having second-floor balconies, um, generally, we, we find those are intrusive on people's privacy. And, you know, we, we're not really um predisposed to having second-floor balconies like this.
Okay. Okay. Oh, you know, I have, have.
Back to the question. As part of your overall um design and especially, you know, looking at where we are now with COVID-19, do you see in, in your line of work where separate accesses and privacy relative to that's becoming more of a critical design component?
I, I mean, I can't actually say for certain that's, you know, what's happening. I, I felt that even before that, just the, the, the thought of the, having your individual unit that felt was more appealing to being a part of like an overall, you know, multi- walking into and a, a single entry and then going into your apartment, going up a level. multi-walking into and a single entry and then going into your apartment, going up a level or around the back. So it was just, it was just a design intent that I thought worked for the property.
I have a question. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
A threshold question here, okay? I, the way this has been presented so far up to me seeing this picture is that this is a two-to-four-family application for four-family unit or a three-or-four-family unit, okay, which is a permitted use. Everyone keeps insisting on a townhouse. Are townhouses a permitted use in this zone? That's quite, I'm gonna have to ask our planner that question.
Yes, the zone permits.
No, no, I'm asking my, I'm asking my planner. I'll get to you, Brian. I'm not gonna cut you off. Donna, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Does the ordinance permit townhouses in the zone?
No.
Okay. So if everybody keeps, the applicant keeps calling this a townhouse project, then it is gonna turn into a D1 use variance, which is gonna require new notice.
So let me ask the architect a question about the units and the design.
Sure.
So each of the dwelling units has a main entrance door at ground level. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then there's a door on the second level that goes out to the balcony.
Correct, yeah.
And there are no other points of access for entering the, an individual unit?
No, there's not.
So there's only one point of access. They're designed as a stacked dwelling with ground-floor living space and then second-floor other living space that's more private, like the bedrooms.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So in that sense, it's kind of resembles a townhouse. However, the city's ordinance defines townhouses as single-family attached dwellings with two points of access. So by the ordinance's definition of what a townhouse is, what they've proposed is not a townhouse.
Okay.
The R2 zone permits single-family detached dwellings and then two-to-four-family dwellings and defines multifamily dwellings as anything that's more than two dwelling units in a structure. So this building, as proposed, is a three-family multifamily, three-dwelling-unit multifamily building.
Okay.
Which is a permitted use.
Okay, that's what I needed to clarify because I keep hearing the reference to townhouse. I want to make sure that if that's what it is under the ordinance, that we have proper jurisdiction. All right, Mr. Left.
Townhouse is a really bad way to describe a use, particularly a residential use. It's better used as a description of an architectural style because basically townhouses are single-family dwellings. They're just attached, so they could be, you know, two units, three units, six units together in a row, but they're still a single-family dwelling, just like we have on Park Avenue. Those are all single-family dwellings, but they're attached to each other. And they're, you know, they're townhouses, so they're not a permitted use in the R1 zone where they are. And that creates, you know, conformity problems for them. And they do meet the ordinance's definition of having two points of access. So this, this thing that's proposed is distinctly designed differently from that.
Okay, so it's not, in your opinion, under the ordinance, it's not defined as a townhouse technically, and it's a multifamily dwelling, three units.
I have a question for Donna. So if these were, if these were three separate structures but with one point of entrance, so exactly the way they were, but there was space in between each dwelling?
Couldn't do it.
Would that still be multifamily?
No.
No.
Go ahead, Donna, the question was for you, not me.
They would have to be in one structure. If they were three separate structures, that would be a type of use that's not considered by the ordinance. In some towns, you know, it's treated differently, but our ordinance doesn't, doesn't, you know, there could be issues with number of principal uses and things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So the thing is, if these, if this building had a back door on each of those units, you know, on the, on the west-side facade, they would technically meet the definition of being a townhouse.
I feel like we're kind of splitting hairs, though, almost, aren't we, Donna?
But they want to use the townhouse criteria for certain aspects of their application. And if, if the board decides that this is a townhouse use, then they would need different relief. Because like I said, the R2, the principal permitted uses are detached, single-family houses, two-to-three, four, two, three, and four-family. And, you know, that's, that's it.
Personally, to me, I think it looks like a townhouse. I, I, I understand that the definition is not exactly what we call a townhouse, but to me, these look like three townhouses.
I, I would agree that from the side elevation, it gives the feeling of being three townhouses. From the front elevation, it looks like, you know, not a, the porch architecturally, I think, is unhelpful, but it could, it looks very similar to the house two lots to the west, where it has a very similar large A gable facing the street and a wide porch, if they put a similar hip-style porch roof on the porch, it would look very similar to the yellow house that's like two, two lots over.
So, yeah, Donna, I can address that now if you guys will let me.
Before you proceed, before you proceed, Mr. Conda Torre, I think, I think the board is going to have to actually come up with what we really feel this is based on. I, if we feel that this is reminiscent of a townhouse, then.
Jack, I would ask you, I don't know that the board can use its opinion of what something is when the ordinance defines.
You got to follow the ordinance. But I think we should also hear from the other planner. He's been, he's been patiently raising his hand to come in and have a comment, so.
And Mr. Harris has a question also.
Okay. Well, why don't we ask Mr., have Mr. Harris ask his question of Donna, and then let's get the other planner in.
Miss Miller, if they were to put three back doors onto this, to this, to this house, then they will become townhouses, correct?
Under the ordinance, yeah. If they had a second means of access.
Okay, but those back doors would go on the other street. So you might be entering on Bond Street and then coming out a block over on the other side.
No, no, it doesn't have to be on a street. It could just be in that backyard or a side yard.
Okay, well, one will be in the backyard, one will be in the side yard, two will be in the side yard. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Santori?
I think you indicated, Mr. Serpico, that Mr. Left was looking to speak, so.
Yeah, do you have any objection to him speaking?
I do not.
Mr. Chairman or members of the board?
No.
Why don't we get him in? I think we've already sworn him.
Yes.
Am I up?
Yes.
Go right ahead. You've been patiently waiting to speak your piece. Go right ahead.
Okay, first, I just want to add a little bit of clarification. There seems to be some confusion regarding multifamily versus townhouses. The truth is, they're the same thing. Donna had said it earlier that a townhouse is a style of house. It's a style of building construction. What the ordinance permits is two, three, and four-family dwellings, which this is. So this is a, this remains a permitted use. There's nothing in the ordinance that says a townhouse is not permitted in the R2 zoning district.
Yes, it does.
So even if it is a townhouse. Wait, wait, wait. You've got, Mr. Left, Mr. Left, Donna just said you're wrong. But the, there's not, Donna, can you explain to me why?
So there's a semantic argument to be made about townhouses and multifamily dwellings. Townhouses can be multifamily dwellings, but not all multifamily dwellings are townhouses.
Correct.
So in this town, we have a definition of what this architectural style is and what its use is. And the zoning ordinance says townhouses are permitted uses in certain zones. And when they're not listed as a use, they're not a permitted use in that zone.
Okay.
The R2 to R4 does not list townhouses as a use. That means it's not permitted.
I have a question.
And that means a building, which is a single, basically, I'm gonna read the definition. An attached or semi-detached dwelling with two direct means of access from the outside, having separate cooking, blah, blah, blah. This is not meeting that definition. These units all have one direct means of access to the outside.
Okay. So it's, so it's not a townhouse, it's a multifamily dwelling and a use variance is not required?
Exactly. And I don't think, I mean, I hate to muddy the water here, but I don't agree with needing a density variance. The point for discrepancy in the gross calculation of the, of the acreage is.
I agree.
We, when we, when we calculate density, we don't, we don't use portions of units. So it's four rounds down, it's a 17-unit per acre, that's what it is. The math.
I'll take that out of my testimony, save some time.
Well, as long as the board agrees, but, yeah. In fact, this use, as I understand it, would have been before the planning board as a permitted use with no, very few variances, except for that, this strict definition and calculation of floor area ratio.
Okay.
We're counting the basement floor area as habitable space. We've heard the testimony, it's not habitable space. There are ways that they can modify that. And if they did, this would be a permitted use in front of the planning board. And that would be it.
Yeah.
There would be no questions about why can't you save the house? Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, seriously, if they took the basement out of this project, it's a permitted use with no problems, except for the, you know, parking constraints and the porch roof.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Okay, so if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've, A, we've determined that it is not technically a townhouse project from the, from the definition section of the ordinance. B, there's one less D variance that's required, which Donna just spoke about. So I would ask that the applicant, in the testimony, so that we don't have more confusion, because we've already confused enough, not continue to refer to it as a townhouse if it's not a townhouse.
If I may, there is one section that referring to it as a townhouse by a building code definition, not by the township definition, will come into play.
Well, that, okay, that's.
That relates to the ADA standard.
You're muted, Donna.
Yeah, Donna, what'd you say? Go ahead, Donna.
I just, anything that relates to a code, we should probably then listen, muddy the water. If it's a townhouse under the ADA, then we don't need to talk about it for this case.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on the law, that I should be applying here, that's all. Okay, all right. I'm, I'm done. I, I understand what's going on.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Conda Torre, please proceed.
Okay, I guess, since we've kind of talked about some of these issues already, just to kind of circle back with Donna's points where she kind of brought up the situation with the house that was a couple doors down, looked similar. So when I, when I put the plans together, the reason why I didn't have a covered porch over the front was basically because it was my understanding that the porch would have been a setback issue. And then when I calculated the building coverage, I understood that the decks, that that front deck and the subsequent other decks, since they're open and allow water to drain through it, because in many towns, that doesn't count towards building coverage either. So I felt that by designing it this way, I was within the constraints of the ordinance. But obviously, Donna pointed out in her review letter that the decks and the porches count towards the building area, so I'm really back to square one. So talking with a client, we had this discussion when I reviewed the letter. And, you know, if we're gonna have to apply for building coverage variance based on the decks, then we would be more than open to cover the porch and make a covered porch similar to the other porches in the neighborhood, should that, that coverage be allowed. And then in that same vein, if we had a covered porch for that front unit, then we would eliminate the porch closest to the street on the second floor. So you would only have the two porches on the second floor that'd be towards the back. So that would further reinforce the feel of the single-family dwelling. Unfortunately, unfortunately.
Your exhibit, which I believe I can share, if Irene, if you allow me to have the access to share that exhibit, which obviously we know we can introduce, but at least it goes to show some of the redesign that we may have to bring back next time around so that you can show the indication that we're embracing some of the comments here.
Mr. Avaloni, would you allow them to share that?
Of course.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Santori.
Is that popping up?
I'm not seeing anything yet.
Hold on one second. I don't know why. It's supposed to be. Yes, no, now?
No, if you have the document open prior to clicking on the share screen button, it's, it's a little easier.
I do have it open, and I'm clicking the green button at the top left.
Yes, click, no, click the middle, the green arrow, and then choose the document from your screen.
Here we go, I think. I don't know why it's not.
Can you help him out, Irene?
I cannot. I don't have the document either.
Can I email it to you real quick, Irene?
Sure.
All right, for whatever reason, I mean, I'm there on it, but I don't know why it's not moving to Irene. Okay. It's the second attachment.
The images, right?
The images, yeah.
I'm just waiting to receive it. Okay, got it. Which one would you like me to share?
The actual rendering, the proposed elevations, not the floor plans.
Is that it?
Yes, that's.
That's it.
Mr. Conda Torre, would you please take us through the top photo and indicate some of the changes that you made in response to Ms. Miller's comments, please?
Yeah, so we, we went through her comments. We understand that the similar houses in the area, there's a Victorian theme that runs, runs through. And, you know, we understood the comments regarding the porch. So this is a revised elevation that we put together. Now, you know, keep in mind that we did receive the comments yesterday, so this was put together rather quickly. So we haven't finalized all the details, but I know that we already provided renderings previously. So if you have those and you can, you can really see the difference and what the porch can do. So we are more than happy to add the porch. But, I mean, upfront, it does, I think, is a part of that variance for the building coverage. But the, without the roof, we need it anyway.
Sure. A couple things just to walk through real quick. So there were some notes that Ms. Miller made in her very thorough report, which I think, you know, revised elevation that we show here. So there was some issue regarding the lining, aligning of the windows from the second and first floor.
Yeah.
Though the closing off of the porch access with the side ingress egress points, which you've now opened up and changed, made the door the focal point, and obviously addressed the window alignments to kind of properly get some symmetry and balance out of the front of that structure, correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, one of the things, so that, the path no longer goes to the driveway. We, we've altered the path, so it comes straight out the front door. I think we changed the door to a larger door with side lights. We created more symmetry. We added the gable on the porch roof that's similar to one of the Victorian houses on the corner. They kind of have that motif over there, and we. And we changed the railing a little bit. I feel that using black spindles makes that feel more transparent than having all those white railings, so to kind of clean that up. And then, I think it's a big difference not having that second-floor porch at the first unit right up closer to the street. So, you know, when you're walking down the street, your perspective really looks at it, and the stuff that's in the back and the other units, they've kind of go out of your point of view, and you're focused on that front elevation, which I think is consistent with what's in the neighborhood.
And now, I understand, you know, obviously, some comments from the board members relative to the exterior balcony areas that have been set up. Obviously, we've removed one, with the two remaining proposed. One of the bases for that, I'm assuming, Mr. Condottori, was just to promote some outdoor open light interaction kind of elements for particular unit owners?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any particular questions regarding some of the directional changes that we've made relative to response to Ms. Miller's comments?
Personally, Mr. Centauri, Mr. Condottori, I like this concept much more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we would have had it as a formal exhibit. We just didn't really, we apologized, you know, by the time we got it, and we had a quick meeting and we pulled this together. Mr. Condottori did a great job of literally redesigning it this afternoon, so we appreciate his efforts.
Catherine, do you have a question?
I was just going to comment that this works much better than the original elevation that was in the plans. And I think it just goes, and it's a little bit more in tune with the neighborhood. I personally think the windows are really heavy-looking, but that's just a personal So I just wanted to add that comment.
Okay.
We can certainly look at that, you know, as part of anything as well. Appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. I think you would get a lot greater approval from the board from this concept.
Yeah. We noticed Ms. Miller's report was, you know, excellent, and I think that when we went and looked through it relative to some of these comments, and started to discuss some options this afternoon, you know, obviously, you don't really know all of us. Mr. Hannah does a lot of development. We didn't really get into that. And I've been building units for the last 15 years myself, so we all kind of weighed in, from architect to planner to engineer to everyone, to try and put together, you know, and looking at her comments. And I think that her comments have definitely generated a better iteration than what we submitted.
Thank you for doing this so quickly, Mr. Centauri and Mr. Condottori. I think this design is much more in line with the neighborhood.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you for pulling it together quickly. I do have two questions, though. You said that having the basement is what is putting this over the FAR. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, it'd be the height of the basement, though, not, right? Or the basement itself. I think it's the height.
And just for the distinction, so you understand your ordinance specifically, at seven feet, it triggers that being counted as calculated space. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone? So if we came in at literally 6'11 1/4", it's a point and discussion. We left it that way, and we didn't choose to, just to clarify a little bit how we got here procedurally, we were told that the 17.4 pushed us here from Ms. Alonso, that we were forced to be here. And as a result of that, since we were going to be here anyway, under the 17.4, which we had a, you know, somewhat of a discrepancy with from the inception, because we felt that the 2,500 per unit controlled, and that the 17.4 was a non, you know, really a non-factor, it was inconsistency, discrepancy in the ordinance. But since we were coming anyway, and we felt that we had to be here, we essentially went ahead and put the proper clearance in the basement to have that little extra room to be able to make sure the mechanicals tucked away better, so there was better flow when people were walking around, whether it was work or anything that might be dropped or piping, so that for storage purposes, in these units, that we had adequate clearance and adequate mobility. That was the basis of how we, since we understand the iteration of what triggered the FAR.
Mr. Centauri, I think, you know, having seen this new rendering, I think this is a good place to stop, since we can proceed again at a future date and discuss further the site plan and the parking and the architectural concepts a little more with Mr. Condottori and your engineer as well.
Oh, you had another question?
You want me to... Go ahead, Brittany.
Actually, a question, a quick comment. Is there a reason why there's no dining room? There's a kitchen and a living room.
I mean, dining rooms are not very, you know, common as a formal dining room. We might put an island in there. You know, we haven't really dug into it, but the open floor plan is more of a feel that we're going for. So, yeah, we generally don't do formal dining rooms in a unit this size.
Well, there's actually no place to eat. I mean, it doesn't have to be formal, but there's actually no place to eat.
Well, yeah.
It's because you really wanted to get a third bedroom in there. That's really what that is.
No, we could show the furniture more accurately in the plan to show a table, but it wouldn't be a formal dining room itself.
Right. But I think, to Brittany's point, there's no place to eat except on the sofa. I mean, I live in a house like that. We don't have a dining room, but we have seating for five people to eat. Yeah, because I was just thinking, I have two other kind of issues with this. If you are going to go back to the drawing board, and one of them is that parking. And if you were to maybe get rid of a room, you would have more living space for three people in one unit, and then you wouldn't need a variance in parking if you lowered the number. But that's obviously up to you. I was just thinking, brainstorming. And then, lastly, I would like to see a lot more stormwater management on this site, and maybe like porous pavement, if you are going to go back to the drawing board and redo this stormwater. It's just a lot of block coverage.
I agree totally, Brittany. We need to understand a little bit more of the stormwater management, but I think, you know, we're going to have to have the engineer come back and Mr. Condottori. So we're not going to finish this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Jason here, Jason Fisher here, board engineer. To that point about stormwater, what I'd like to see, if there's going to be a resubmission, is a stormwater management report, doesn't need to be elaborate, but what we want to see is, where is runoff going today, and where will it go if this project... We have a special interest in comparing the clean post-development flows to neighboring properties. So if that's something that could be submitted, that'd be very helpful.
Mr. Centauri, do you agree that you could meet that?
Yeah. Mr. Sebagi, we have no issue with preparing that. You obviously have already done a lot of the data and study relative to it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. If I may interject, at this time, I would like to see when you come back, how the gutters are going to go down. I think that design you redid is beautiful, but I would also like to see how your gutters are going to come down to guarantee that the water is going to come out and go straight to the street, even if at one point, you have to go under the ground to put the water out to the street on the side where the grass is. But, you know, that bothers me. And the second thing was, in reference to eating space, I think that we're overly extending our bounds when we start to tell people where they can eat at. It's their house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Donna?
Hi, Donna Miller. I just wanted to ask Mr. Condottori, as far as, I understand the basement space is specifically for storage and mechanicals, and we're sort of chasing this, you know, if it's, if the floor, if the height of the ceiling is high enough so that people can comfortably walk around and store stuff and access their heater, that's going to count toward this floor ratio problem. Is there, is there a reason why the attic space wasn't designed to accommodate either storage or some of the mechanicals?
You'd be able to put mechanicals probably up there. You might have mechanicals of both. Sometimes we heat them from, it might be a two-zone system, where there's a unit in the attic and a unit in the basement for units of this type. But we don't have any kind of full staircase, so from a storage perspective, I mean, you have pulldowns, but they're not, you know, they're pulldowns. It's nicer to have something where you can store bikes, and there's no place for bikes and surfboards and stuff like that.
And you're using some sort of roof system that's not supposed to be, you know, is it just not really load-bearing?
Yeah, we're just using standard rafters instead of, you know, accounting for a load of like a habitable space up there.
I was just trying to, you know, work out mentally if there was a way that they could reduce the amount of basement area, you know, use, still use a stone wall or something for the foundation, but reduce the actual excavated part for their, for their storage and the heating and mechanical equipment. You know, technically, it reduces the floor ratio problem, but, you know, at the same time, the units seem really large, and we didn't get any testimony on that. So I plan on, I guess, next time, speaking to how you arrived at the square footage for the units, because I think I had calculated them out, you know, it's almost 1,900 square feet per dwelling, and...
Yeah, that's with the basement.
Right. So, you know, some of the other problems are associated with the actual size of your footprint. You know, it's not as simple as just reducing the floor ratio problem. I think the footprint might need a little shaving.
We could take a look at it and then see, you know, how we want to proceed with it.
With a simple drop ceiling in the basement, a six, a half-foot drop ceiling in the basement, would that solve that problem?
No, that, I mean, it doesn't, the drop ceiling is not going to help us. We're not trying to hide the stuff. We're just trying to create more headroom for storage down there, so you're not ducking underneath pipes and ductwork. But we wouldn't intend on putting a drop ceiling downstairs.
I think to Mr. Harris's point, just to kind of reiterate, literally, if we dropped it, if we dropped the length from seven foot to 6'11 1/4", we're not even having this conversation. We didn't try and hide anything, and we could do it very easily. We were just trying to be very transparent, and if anybody's hung up on it, it's really, we're under. If we move it by a quarter inch, it becomes not even a discussion.
And then you still have room to do what you want to do.
Yeah, we were just leaving it seven because it was a standard height. It was easy, and it was just allowing from additional clearance, you know, but literally shaving it a 16th of an inch makes it irrelevance, so...
Does that affect the variance?
It eliminates it.
So then, if it eliminates it, where does its application go?
I still think it's here, because they told us we were here from the inception, but Ms. Miller seems to think differently.
I wouldn't suggest a change in venue.
No. I don't, I'm not going to start all over, no.
Right. But, I mean, there are ways. The thing is, though, you know, we've had problems in the past in town where things are, you know, borderline. And, you know, if you're going to reduce the height of the basement, we don't need to create a potential problem down the road with habitability there. You know, I'd even recommend removing the windows in the basement with those window wells. I mean, it may, A, help some of the drainage on the west side ultimately, but also, you know, the, again, just, you know, I think seven-foot height is a comfortable and reasonable expectation. It's whether you need that much floor area at seven-foot height for a single-family dwelling of this type to have storage and mechanicals, or does this become more living space? So there are ways to solve that problem by reducing floor ratio and not, you know...
I understand.
Creating these potential problems down the road of, oh, yeah, it's, you know, six foot 11 apartment down there.
Understood. I'll address it with all the professionals. I understand where you're going. Any other points of issues that we should take? I mean, I've been taking copious notes here to prepare us to have some revisions and submissions. Anything else that we may not have testified to, but as you've seen so far or otherwise, it's just a question that you may want us to be prepared to address?
We made a comment in our letter about lighting, looking for more lighting information on neighboring properties. I believe your plan just cut it off at the property line, which may be what it is because of the fence. We just need some clarification on that to see what happens on the neighboring.
In order to address some of the border issues, did your, Mr. Centauri, consider just putting in two units as opposed to three units? Was that ever an option on the table?
Well, what I can tell you is that it's obviously something that he looked at a variety of iterations. And, you know, one of the major issues, and I kind of alluded to it in the beginning, and I do want to just kind of retouch upon it, because I think it's important, the affordability and the promoting of housing, affordable housing stock, you know, Asbury Park has been in constant renewal now for a number of years. And one of the, I guess, benefits and detriments of that constant renewal is, is that as prices continue to increase, and as units become less accessible for more median-range housing. So I think that when you look at the average price points in this county or in this town area, he's trying to put units in that are more consistent with the rental and accessibility.
Mr. Centauri, you're basically talking about the financial aspect of...
No, not really. No, I'm not saying that, because honestly, from a financial perspective, it's really, it's something that's probably somewhat of a, you know, it's almost a wash.
I don't think you answered my question. Did they consider just two units?
Yeah, they did. And that's why I said they came to three units, because they felt like this was a more affordable range of stock for people, not their cost, not their benefit, just literally creating more of affordable, accessible housing in the range of what would be the attractive. So that's one of the discussions that they had, you know, certainly looked into.
So you're basically saying that you're increasing the ability for people to find homes in Asbury? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And certainly, homes at an affordable price point, because when you start talking about two units in this particular instance, the units become much larger, and they become much more expensive from rental or if they were to be, you know, something else. But, you know, they certainly become much more expensive. Any other questions or points of that need, oh, sure?
What is the size of each unit?
Mr. Condottori, can you give the specifics of the first and second floor living space versus the basement, please?
Yeah, so we're just talking about living space. So the two units in the back, the floor is 578, and the front unit is 561, so they're stacked up. So two units total out to be 1,174 square feet, and one unit in the front is 1,122 square feet of living space.
Thank you.
And that's, I didn't take out the stairwell. The stairs are in there, too, so... So you're roughly about, you know, 1,100 square feet per unit of living space.
Or a three-bedroom unit.
And a three-bedroom unit.
So I think this is a good place for us to stop, Mr. Centauri. I think, you know, we're going to have to continue with Mr. Condottori's presentation as well as Mr. Sebagi. He will have to testify. I see Jason raising his hand like a good Catholic boy.
Just one small request. If plans are going to be revised and resubmitted, if you guys could just put together a summary of the changes you made, that'll help guide us in a re-review, make it more...
We'll certainly put a checklist cover letter that'll make it easy for you to walk through it for all professionals, so that there doesn't have to be, you know, a review from A to Z.
Thank you. And if it helps, we're always available by phone or email if your engineer wants to contact us or applicant or whatever.
I appreciate that.
So, Irene, when can we get... The Hannahs have a question.
So my question is this. So it seems to Donna, the planner, we don't need a variance if it wasn't for the FAR. Am I correct about that?
Well, you need some variances, but depending on how you change the plans, you might eliminate the need for some variances. you might eliminate the need for some variances.
Okay.
I think what Mr. Hannah is asking specifically is, is that.
On the porch, you eliminate the front yard variance.
Not that.
Coverage variance. The thing about the FAR though, is tied again on a technicality. You might be able to eliminate the variance by reducing the height of the basement livable area.
Okay.
But I think the board would challenge you on, on that. And you'd be better off reducing the footprint, at least of the basement area.
Okay. So the FAR is one variance and then we eliminated the three units because we said that was an allowable use, correct? The three units, having three units over there?
You're allowed to have three units and you eliminated the density variance because that was something Mr. Lev and I agree that that's calculation.
I understand. And the, the front porch, I guess there was a disruption over there, right? Like we, we didn't, Daniel didn't kind of understand that. So if we add the front porch, get rid of the balcony, the covered front porch, we no longer need that specific variance that was set up, correct?
Based on the rendering that was presented, it would appear that you wouldn't need the front yard setback, but you probably still need the building coverage variance.
And we still need to talk about parking.
There's a lot of other exceptions.
So now just to be clear on the parking, it is 1.5 parking spaces for two bedrooms and above.
We are not.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
We are not clear on that. And actually I recommend Mr. SherpaCo and I and Jason, or Mr. Fisher, have a conversation about that later.
I see, I see. Okay.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll wait to hear back with that. I can certainly speak to Mr. SherpaCo at some point in time relative to that issue. And we can hash that out prior to our returning. This, Irina, when do you, I think you said September?
Yes, our next available date is September 8th.
Okay.
And, and I suggest give yourself the time to make comprehensive revisions that can be submitted to us in sufficient time to give you, you know, an appropriate review. We'll, we'll update our reports. And, you know, if there's more favorable findings, we'll, we'll advise the board.
We'll have our stuff in, in the next probably two weeks, latest by the end of the month, which gives plenty of time to obviously give you guys some response time. So if there's anything else we need to react to, we can do it and provide it well in advance of the required thing. I just, I guess just as a procedural point, we would just want to see, have, you know, announcement made that no further notice is required if we're carrying the matter to September 8th.
We'll, we'll carry him, Mr. Santori. So.
One question, one thing, these, all the witnesses have to return because they still have to be subject to.
Right. Agreed.
No issue.
Yeah. For the members of the public. Yep.
Yes. So I'll make a motion to carry the 704 Fourth Avenue, 13 Grand Point Way, Ocean View Development, December 8th, 2020, without further notice.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention and have a nice evening.
I'm sorry. I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and a second by Brittany Ashman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Application carried to September 8th without further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hannah, Mr. Lev.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Irina, thank you. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. And everyone else hang on because we still have one more application.
Yes, please hold on. All right. The next application will be BBC Capital Group, 117 Boardin Avenue. Before we start with that application, I'm going to ask Mr. SherpaCo to give a review of exactly what this application is about.
Okay. Cutting to the chase, there, I read the notice, there were a number of different alternatives requested by the applicant. The most important is to me, based on the records that I have seen, is the declaration of a non-conforming use, that it's a non, that in fact, this is a non, a valid non-conforming use from a zoning perspective. Applicant has claimed that it is, applicant claims that if there's a claim of abandonment, it's never been abandoned. And just that it's, it's a rather all encompassing notice. But I think the gist of the application is whether or not it's a valid non-conforming use. And we have some zoning records that will shed some very relevant light on that, which I've seen as part of the application file. So that's what I think we have. I think it's straightforward, straightforward decision of non-conforming use.
When you say.
Mr. SherpaCo.
Wait, Jack, I have a question. When you said that the applicant thinks it is, is what? A non-conforming use?
Six, it's, it's two structures.
Right.
Containing four and one containing two units for a six, six unit project on this subject property as a valid non-conforming use. That's what we're doing.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. So, Mr. Posada.
Hi, how are you? Can you guys all hear me well?
Yes.
No, you're pretty far away though.
All right. Let me scoot in a little bit if that helps. I do apologize.
No problem.
Um, so first and foremost, thank you everybody for tonight's hearing. I know it is late at night.
One second. Can Russell come back?
Yes, he can.
Yes, he can. Yeah, we need to call a roll.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
We're missing some people.
Okay.
Okay, Russell, you were back.
Thanks for remembering me, Brittany.
Always.
All right. And I'm going to take roll again.
Where's Russell?
All right, Christopher Abelloni.
I'm here.
Daniel Harris.
You're on mute, Dan.
Still muted, Dan.
Thank you. Russell Lewis.
I am here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
I'm here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
And Catherine Minervini.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irina. Mr. Posada, would you please proceed?
Great. Thank you. Also, I appreciate everybody's time today. I know that it's getting late in the hour. So I will try my best to hit all the bullet points while taking consideration the time that it is right now. My name is Matthew Posada, as you guys now know. I am from the law firm Skane Price. I represent the applicant BBC Capital LLC in connection with this application to appeal the denial of zoning permit to operate a six unit multifamily use within the two existing structures on a single lot. And the issuance of a certificate of non-conformity perceived as the improvements in uses have never been abandoned pursuant to the Asbury Park zoning ordinance 30 hyphen 80.4 C and all municipal land use law. As stated prior, this subject application is located at 117 Boardin Ave. That is block 1101, lot 37, within the R1A zoning district within the city of Asbury Park. Tonight, as discussed, the applicant is requesting that the board issue a certificate of lawful performance to provide that the property contains legally pre-existing four unit multifamily use in the front structure and a two family use in the rear structure on the property. So that the applicant may continue to utilize this property as a, or actually I should say continue with the four unit and then use the additional two units for a total of six unit multifamily use at the property, but continue their efforts at rehabbing the site. In connection with this application, I'm going to have two witnesses. My first witness will be Ed Colling, planner from Dresner Robin. And then also to provide a more of a detailed history of the site, I will have the principal of BBC Capital, Yona Weiss, who can give us the details of what was told to him, the documents he received upon acquisition and what he has done with the site since then to give us that timeline as to what has happened to show that there has not been an abandonment of his residential use here on the site. If I can, with that being said, I am in receipt of the board's planning report dated July 7th of 2020. I would like to take a moment to address those legal concerns in the report and provide more context to this matter. Most specifically, I want to discuss a little of the history of the site and exactly how we got here today. When municipalities adopt a zoning ordinance, as you guys are very familiar with, the existing ordinance is changed. And inevitably there are uses that are newly prohibited and structures that no longer conform with the new ordinance. These, as we all know, are known as non-conforming uses in structures. The rules and procedures dealing with non-conforming uses in structures derive from the principle that it is inequitable to strip away a person's lawfully asserted property rights retroactively. In recognition of this principle, the municipal land use law is designed to protect landowners from losing property rights that predate land use regulations, such as the one that's before this board, as stated in NJ SA 40,55D hyphen 68, titled Nonconforming Structures and Uses. Now going specifically to the law itself and case law, a pre-existing use can only be forfeited when the structure is either destroyed or when it's abandoned, that actual non-conforming use is abandoned. An applicant though can demonstrate that a non-conforming use was never abandoned by establishing the structure lawfully existed at the time of the zone change. And that also that the intent has never been abandoned either. This is from the case of Farrell versus Zoning Board. And it's important to know that is that intent at point, at that point in time, when it became that non-conforming usage, use in structure.
Mr. Posada.
Yes.
When did your client purchase this property?
2014.
2014.
Yes.
At that time, what was, what was the property's use?
The property's use, and my client will further discuss this, but from what my, his testimony, I believe is, and again, I can't speak on his behalf, but from doing our due diligence, was when he purchased the property, the front lot had a four unit use in the front, which had four tenants. And in the back had tenants, but they were evicted. And he will describe that in more details as to what was going on at that time of purchase in 2014.
So the, the units in the back have, are still intact and still usable as, as a two family?
They are, however, they do need to be rehabbed. And before my client were to take the next step, as you already know, we have our planner, Dresner Robin, who's also good as satisfied as the engineers, if this board finds favorably, is that we need to rehab the site, plain and simple. And that's what we're really looking to do as our next step. Because we have seen that we have a fully occupied four unit in the front. And we'd like to also do the same in the back. In order to do so, it is our intent to rehab the site. And so it is building code compliant and that is consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Is the front house currently occupied now by four tenants?
I believe so, but I can't speak on that behalf. I would have to ask the applicant himself. I do apologize.
Okay. Well, we'll get to your applicant then.
Okay.
If I may. You don't have to go back to the inception of time.
No.
Apart from 96, don't, do you, is it, am I correct that you, that I have seen a certificate of zoning compliance from former zoning officer Victor Ferminick? That says that this has a four family in the front and a two family in the back?
Yes, that is correct. And he also de- aggregated for clarity, showing four units plus two units equals six units. And he also references that before, that this address is 117 and 117 and a half, but now it's 117.
If you want, but you don't have to go back prior to that date. We have a city zoning officer who already said that this was four and two.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll cut out some of the meat and go a little bit further ahead.
Go right to the substance. Go right to it.
All right. Great. Appreciate it very much. All right. So.
Let's, let's enter that zoning certificate into the record. I've seen it. I don't know. I, I, but I have.
Also as part of the application as well, it is the.
It is part of the application.
Yes.
All right. Let's go.
Okay. So move forward, get to the facts here before the board is, as stated, is also in the board's planning report, you'll see the historical aerials show that these two structures existed here since 1940. Also, the as-built that were provided to this board will also demonstrate that that two unit in the back, both are coupled with two bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room. And also I believe at a bathroom, I apologize. And the way that it's, the floor plan is, it's essentially a replication. It's a unit on the first floor and a unit on the second floor. And that the CO that we were able to provide was the 96 CO, that's that four unit in the front, which shows the good efforts of this client. They have rehabbed it. And then the rear, as I stated before, that is the layout of the site itself. I won't reiterate the zoning, certificate of zoning compliance, because we already discussed that. I would next, we'd just like to bring the board to the tax records themselves. As recently from the over request I did in 2019 when I was preparing this application, you would be able to see that the tax records indicate both structures on there. They also referenced that the land value is $197,400. And then they specifically de-aggregate the structure value for both structures. And they discussed the breakdown of it, the front being a 12 rooms, five beds, and the rear being several rooms and three beds, which is consistent with what the applicant is putting before the board today. They also discussed the structurers and the de-aggregation with the front being valued at a little, a little, at over $100,000, at 197,400. And that the rear structure is also valued at 50,300. So as you can see, the client has always been paying taxes as this being a two structure. With that being said, I would like to just kind of push this forward, actually we already discussed some of the history prior, to now turn to my first witness, Ed Colling of Dresner Robin, so he can provide the planning testimony for this subject application.
Mr. Colling, please raise your right hand. Psalmus, for the testimony about to, oh.
I had to unmute. Sorry.
Okay. Psalmus, for the testimony about to given this matter, be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Yes, my first name is Edward. The last name is Colling, K O L L I N G.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Posada is your witness.
Great. Thank you so much. And real quick, what licenses do you possess?
I have, I mean, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My license is in standing. I'm also certified as a planner by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I graduated from Rutgers in 1974. When I started at Rutgers, there were no women. That's how old I am.
Thank you, Mr. Colling. We accept your credentials.
Great. Terrific. So we'll move forward. All right. And in reviewing the subject application, are you also familiar with the R1A Zone District here?
Uh, yes, yes, I am. The R1A Zone District is specific, basically a single family zone, 5,000 square foot lots. The, the use of this property, as with two dwellings or two buildings and six units is not permitted. But it's our position that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And that has historically been this, this use and therefore should be continued to, should be allowed to be continued.
Okay. And then also, I presume that you've also, in connection with this application, reviewed the remaining zoning ordinances applicable to R1A and the master plan. Is that correct?
Yes, the master plan, as of 2017, master plan continues the, the zoning or has this as the recommended land use as R1A.
Okay. And now can you please describe to the board as to why, from a planning perspective, why this application is consistent with the master plan and also from a planning aspect as well, to be warranted in the issuance of a certificate of non-conformity?
Right. Well, as the, as the board attorney has mentioned, and I think we were both at the, the city planner's office at the same time together. And we were provided with a certificate of zoning conformance, zoning compliance from 1996. The, the zoning had changed to R1A sometime before that. So this property was already zoned R1A. And if it were permitted as this, by pursuant to the certificate of zoning compliance to continue as a four family in the front and two units in the back, I don't see that anything has changed that would, that would make that, that finding any less valid today. Continues as R1A. The buildings still stand. They have historically stood there. The building still contain four units in the front, two units in the back. The building in the back is not occupied. It is boarded up. But the fact that the building is, is vacant does not really, does not constitute a, an abandonment of the use. Simply means that at this time, the, the owner has sought, has, has decided not necessarily to, to lease those units, but they certainly could be if properly rehabbed under current. but they certainly could be if properly rehabbed under current construction code. I think that in doing that, the zoning, the master plan makes several recommendations in terms of bringing buildings up to code. Clearly, the buildings today are tired, they're worn, the rear building is boarded up. It's, it's not, it's, it's not attractive. It's really doesn't add much to the community. But if this certificate of zoning compliance were continued, the applicant could make the proper investment into, into the building to rehabilitate it. Among the planning goals in the master plan is to provide for a variety of housing types for all income levels throughout the city. And we all know that Asbury Park has been going through a revitalization. A lot of the units, especially toward the waterfront, are more expensive. They're larger. Units in this part of town are smaller, more affordable. So rehabilitating these units in place would continue the character of this area, would add to the character by, by bringing the buildings up, up to code and would provide for that variety of housing units. Among the land use objectives are to support the upgrading of substandard properties in the city through code enforcement efforts, education, ordinance amendments, and other initiatives. Obviously, if this building were rehabilitated, that would bring what is currently substandard units up, up to code standards would meet that land use objective. There's another objective is to ensure that the city's existing housing is well-maintained enough to code. Again, I think we would comply with that land use objective as well. Within the housing plan, there are objectives to protect and preserve established residential character through zoning enforcement, design guidelines, inspections of multifamily dwellings, and rehabilitation where necessary. Well, clearly, this is the case where the rehabilitation would be necessary and could be carried out if the certificate of zoning compliance was continued. There's another objective to address substandard housing conditions and the need for housing rehabilitation. Again, that's exactly what this property needs. The conditions, especially in the back building are substandard, and there is a need for housing rehabilitation, which could be carried out if the certificate of zoning compliance was continued. So not only do I think that the, that the property should be, the certificate of zoning compliance should be continued for this property, but I think that if we, if that was allowed to occur and the investments were made, this would also foster the recommendations and objectives of the city's master plan.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Colling. I have no questions for you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Colling? I'm sorry, Dan, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, my bad. How long have, um, they own, how long have they owned the building?
Since two thousand and fourteen, they said, I believe.
Two thousand and fourteen, a while ago they made an investment up to now because I am familiar with the house and it is an eyesore. So what promise do we have that we can continue this, um, let it be, this variance? Repairs will be made because right now we're in two thousand and twenty-one and nothing has been done to that back house.
If I may, my, my witness, the next witness, the principal, he'll address those comments and concerns.
Yeah, but it has been a while. It's been seven years and it's been looking like for seven years.
I'm sure you will address that in that, in that timeline.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any board members for Mr. Colling? Board professionals, any questions for Mr. Colling?
None.
All right, so Irina, we need to see if anyone in the public has any questions for Mr. Colling.
I don't show anyone with their hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, so please proceed, Mr. Passata. Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Colling.
I'd like to call my next witness, the principal of BBC Capital, Yona Weiss.
We're gonna get a video or is he by phone?
I, I don't know, but I think he can do by video.
Okay.
I see him in my screen view.
They are on. You can unmute yourself at any time during the meeting.
Can we see? I can't see.
I, I can't see anyone.
No, they're, they're, they're not showing a video.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, everyone.
There he goes. Great.
Hi, Matt.
Hello. All right.
First, Mr. Sempico, please swear them in.
Well, I, I want, one witness, correct, Yona Weiss.
Just one, just Yona Weiss, the principal.
I said, I can't see Mr. Weiss, but please raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you can't swear, please, can you affirm?
I affirm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yona, for clarification again, you are the principal at BBC Capital, correct?
Correct.
And you were the principal who negotiated the purchase of the subject property as before this board, correct?
I, I can't hear Mr. Weiss.
Okay, correct, yes, Mr. Weiss. So you were the one who negotiated the purchase of this property in two thousand and fourteen, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Next question I have for you is, when you purchased the property, did you believe you were purchasing a six-unit multifamily use within those two structures?
Correct.
And why did you believe this?
The seller provided me the copies of the, of the city COs and the DCA as well.
Do you mean the green card?
Yes.
That would establish the multifamily use, correct?
Correct.
You have those?
What's that?
You have that documentation?
We do not have that documentation. We tried, we could not find that documentation.
I tried calling the DCA with no response.
Your attorney who represented you doesn't have a file with those documents?
The attorney represented me. I left several messages. She probably it's in storage. I couldn't get the copy of the C A.
Okay.
So then, Yona, when doing your due diligence, did you review the tax records?
Yes.
And did you see on the tax records that there was two structures on, located at this site, which led you to believe that they were permitted structures and uses based on the tax records?
Correct.
And that, did you also, were you also further led to believe that as, since your date of inception, you've been paying municipal taxes on the improvements based on those structures themselves?
Correct.
Okay, now, let's go to the two thousand and fourteen. At the time that you purchased it, is, is it correct that the front structure had tenants?
Yes, the front structure was occupied.
Okay, now, the rear yard, it was not occupied. Was that correct when I stated that to the board prior?
I'm sorry?
When I had stated to the board about fifteen minutes ago, when asked if whether or not the rear structure had tenants when you had purchased it, I had stated that they had no longer had tenants in the rear structure. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you explain why there were not tenants in the rear structure?
The seller advised me that they were affected for non-payment.
Okay, so then is it fair to say that from the seller's reps, the state documents and also municipal documents, you were led to believe that this is a six-family use at the site and that you were comfortable with exhausting your due diligence to move forward with the purchase of the property?
Correct.
Okay, after purchasing your property, did you rehab the front structure?
Yes, the front structure was rehabbed.
Tell us.
Was totally rehabbed.
And what, what did that include?
The roof, new HVAC, the water lines, the sheet rock, the paint, the kitchens, the toilets, the bathrooms, the windows.
Okay, and is it correct that you did not rehab the rear structure at that time because you did not have the financing?
Correct.
Okay, and is it correct to state that since you have an inception of the financing, you have moved forward with this application and that to show your best efforts to rehab the site, you have retained me as your attorney, Garfinkel as your architect, and Dresner Robbins as your planner, through and ever be your engineering professional as well moving forward if this board find favorably. Is that also correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions for this witness board. Thank you so very much.
I have no questions for Mr. Weiss. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Weiss? I don't see anybody, so.
Yeah, Mr. Weiss, um, you've been, you've had this property for so long. Was it any particular reason that you've left the building in such a state of disrepair?
My attorney, Matt, advised before that, right in the beginning financially, it didn't make sense to rehab it. But now financially, I'm pretty stable. I'm ready to go ahead and bring it up to code.
I mean, back to that time, though, Asbury Park had various programs which would have subsidized most of the repairs. Were you aware of that?
No, I was not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else from the board? First, first the board, Donna. All right, not seeing any other questions from the board. Donna, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. This is Donna Miller. I'm not sure if the attorney maybe better able to, to describe this. And Irina, you may need to share screen from the application. I'm looking at a photograph that's part of the application of the building.
Yep.
Is, can, can either of you tell me what this represents, when it was taken? It's in my package, it's page twelve, but it basically is a side view to be the south side view of, of the front building.
Yes, I can actually verify it because I myself was the one who went out there and took the picture. I took the picture as of last summer myself.
Donna, is it this one?
Yes, that one. And there's a second one as well.
Yeah, I have, okay, so make sure we got the same thing. So, Mr. Passata, you took these photographs?
Yes, I myself did.
The effective current condition?
It is actually not the current condition. Provided pictures as most recently as today, which now shows landscaping. It's not a complete landscaping and not our transparency, but they have started installing shrubs. The goal is, if this board find favorably, would be to make sure that the front and the rear structures match, they're consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and that there would be landscaping throughout the entire lot itself, and that the landscape itself would be consistent.
All right, well, so my question is, Mr. Weiss just testified that following his purchase in two thousand and fourteen, he rehabbed the front building, roof, interior, kitchens, bathrooms, fixtures, windows, et cetera. So this view of the side of the building represents the rehab that was done in two thousand and fourteen?
Yes, and I believe that if we were to, and Yona, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but when we go to do the rehab of the rear structure, we will make any other updated renovations to the front to make sure it's fully compliant with the building code as there has been six years. And we will make sure that it is aesthetically pleasing, and we will involve the city along the entire process.
Well, aesthetically pleasing is nice, but let's have a really nicely workmanlike manner as well.
Understood.
Doesn't look like this picture that's in the finished plan. The rendering, there's a rendering that looks.
Right, and that rendering.
Much more pulled together than these renovations that were done in two thousand and fourteen, sorry.
There is no doubt about that, that those renderings are much more cleaner and more aesthetically pleasing. And that is exactly what we intend to do. That is our architect that we have hired to develop the site according to what you have before you, and that this is just a step in that process because if we were, the board find favorably, we would then be taking the next step with architectedals and engineers to make sure this is completely code compliant.
So this is Donna again, so I just want to clarify. So you're testifying that there's going to be essentially a full rehab of both buildings?
I'm saying there's be a full rehab, and then I'll have my, my client confirm this, that there's be a full rehab of the rear and that we will make sure that both the front and rear façades are matching and are consistent with what's being proposed in the rendering. Yona, is that correct?
Correct, the exterior will be matching.
And will that exterior resemble what is in the renderings that we have submitted before the board in connection with this application? Meaning that the render, that the façades we have here today are gonna have to be updated to, in order to replicate what is before this board in our submission in the renderings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, um, when listening to you, are you investing in the neighborhood or are you just doing this to get rid of it?
No, I actually own many properties in the neighborhood. I'm very happy to stay in Asbury and be invested in Asbury.
And then why has it taken so long?
As mentioned before, financially, I wasn't so stable to renovate the back. And then now, thank God, everything is going good.
It's important that if you do it, you keep the property. All right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, follow-up. You mentioned when you purchased it, there were people living in the front house and the back house, they were evicted?
No, I believe, Yona, correct me if I'm incorrect, but when you purchased the property, the front had tenants, the rear did not have tenants. When you asked why, they had said that there was issues with pay and rent, but that was prior to your inception of the site. Is that correct, Yona?
Correct, the seller told me that the reason why it's vacant because they just, they got it.
Oh, I didn't hear the last part.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear the last part.
I'm saying the seller advised me that the reason why it was vacant, the rear structure, because they, they got it.
Okay, and again, since you've owned it, has there been tenants the entire time?
With the front structure?
Both.
Just the front.
Oh, just the front? Okay.
Correct.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Just the front, not the rear.
Yes, Donna.
Hi, Donna Miller again. So again, just to clarify, so following the purchase in two thousand and fourteen, the rear structure was not occupied, but you didn't seek tenants for it?
No, because I believe, Yona, correct me if I'm wrong, but you thought that both sites needed to be rehabbed for your market and that you only had the financing for the front, and that was why. Is that correct, Yona?
Correct.
So even though the previous owner had said those, those units were unoccupied due to eviction for non-payment, you felt the condition wasn't sufficient for occupancy?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. You hear me?
Yeah, that is correct, right, Yona?
Yes.
And to clarify, Yona, again, if this board were to find favorably, your next step would be to rehab the site so that it's fully code compliant, and that would make sure that the site, the interior and the exterior meet those standards and exceed those standards, as that's the reputation you want to have, not just for this property, but for the multiple properties that you do have in Asbury Park. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Weiss? All right, so we can open it up to the public if there are any questions for Mr. All right, uh, so we can open it up to the public if there are any questions for Mr. Weiss in the public. Irene?
I don't show any hands raised.
Okay. Mr. Posada, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Weiss.
You're welcome.
All right, may I do a summation?
Uh, if you don't have any other witnesses, I guess you could make a summation.
Yes, that's correct. I have no other witnesses. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for your time. I know the time of day it is right now. We do appreciate it. We do feel that because of the 96 to get zoning certification showing a six unit multifamily use in the sites coupled up with also the tax records that I was reasonable with that this has always been a six unit, two structured site and has never been abandoned. We hope that the board will find favorably on this application so that we can continue to rehab the site and make this one of many sites that we bring up to conformity for code compliance. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Um, so at this point, we can open it up to public for public comment. Is there anyone, Irene, in the, or comment on this application? Any hands raised?
I don't show any hands raised. Again, if anyone would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand button or press star. Sorry, star nine. Oh, I have one person. Phone number ending in three, three, five, zero. Go ahead and speak. And just one moment, I'm gonna start the clock.
Have to be sworn in.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
Okay, Mr. Magnoli?
Yes.
You saw me swear the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Just one moment, Mr. Magnoli. I have to start the clock.
The public has four minutes for comment.
And it's only about this application, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I'd like to say that in listening to the attorney and the land owner and the proposals, I'm quite impressed with the paperwork that you have, the fact that you went back, you got tax records, you, you showed use, you showed doubt on abandonment and, and I think that compared to, uh, well, I don't want to say that, but I, I just want to say that for the completeness of the job, the way you did it, the way you presented it and you had full facts, I think is, is, is admirable and I don't think you tried to conceal anything or make any statements that were wayward from the exact truth and, and I think that everything should be approved and I think your presentation should serve as a model for the way other people come in and, and sort of are very light on details, very light on, on background, very light on a lot of things which you weren't, so that's my comment.
Are you finished, Mr. Magnoli?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, Irene, for a comment?
I don't show any other hands raised.
All right, thank you so much. We will close public comment section now. And I'll ask the board for comments on this application. Let's start with Mr. Harris.
Obviously, um, it will be an upgrade to that section of Bourne Avenue. Like I said, my biggest question is why has it been in such a state of disrepair when Asbury Park has been giving away money for rehabilitation for the last 25 years? But dead or late, they're never, so if he is earnestly going to redo the property, I have no problem with it. Okay, but I would hate to see it sitting there for another seven years like it is right now if we approve it, approve, approve his request.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Lewis, Russell, do you have any comments regarding this application?
Um, no, I think the facts have been laid out pretty well. The only thing that I would like to stress is just that code isn't involved with this and as long as the building is code compliant, I'm cool. I have a little bit of a question about the number of bedrooms and the size and the lack of closets and all of that, but as long as it passes code, that's it's fine with me, but I just want to go on the record that I think all of those things need to be closely looked at, but as long as they are compliant, I don't have a problem.
Thank you. Ms. Ashman, Brittany, do you have any comments regarding this application?
No, I was gonna say the same thing as Russell, actually. As long as code enforcement is okay with this, then they're gonna stay on it, which I know they will. Um, I think the history's been laid out.
Ms. Potter, Jill, do you have any comments regarding this application?
The only thing I'd like to say is I hope that the front building does in fact get some improvements and matches the back building. Otherwise, I have no other comments.
Mr. Slick, Tim, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I agree with what, and also when they about the front, the front building, they're very careful to say just the facade where the picture was of the sun. It looked a little iffy, so I do hope they rehab the whole thing, but as long as code is adhered to, I'm good.
Thank you, Tim. And finally, Ms. Minarvini.
Um, I agree with every, with all the comments that were just laid out about code enforcement. I know that, Mr. Posada, you said a couple of times that you, you'll be meeting all codes, but there were some specific questions and comments about aesthetics and you only said the word exceed once, so hopefully the beautification of this, not that it needs to be extravagant, but is a little bit above and beyond what, um, you know, what, just, just about the code. So it still looks, we've heard that there was some, you know, there, there's been improvements, but still has a lot to be desired, so, um, that, that would be on my, my own final comment.
Thank you, Catherine. Mr. Gonzalez, welcome back. Do you have any comments regarding this application? You're muted.
I cannot comment anything because I looked out, my Wi-Fi just fell on me, so it took me a while to get back.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna just echo everybody else's comments regarding this application. I hope it gets rehabbed. And as for, um, I, I have no problem the fact that there is already a letter of zoning compliance in the file. And that goes back to 1996, I believe. Where it specifically states it's a six family. I would like to see both structures rehabbed and mimic each other in appearance and beauty. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the non-conforming use of this six, of this structure.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yeah.
I heard a yes.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Catherine Minarvini?
Kitty, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Mr. Avaloni?
Yes.
Okay, application approved.
Thank you so much.
If I may, Mr. Posada?
Yes.
In the future, whenever you bring an applicant or a witness before the board, make sure that we can see them as well as hear them. The physical demeanor of an applicant testifying is equally important to the statements they make in analyzing them for truthfulness.
Will do, understood, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, on that note, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. It is 10:22 PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.
Night.
Good night.